Okay, it's six o'clock, May nineteen, two thousand twenty. Uh, I called to order the City of Kennedy's regular scheduled city council meeting. Amanda, would you call the roll?
Counselor Brianna?
Who is that?
Lynn?
Here.
Counselor Stein? Counselor Stein? Counselor?
I'm here though.
Okay. Counselor Connor?
Here.
Counselor Meyer?
Here.
And has the ci- has city attorney read our call yet? Okay.
Accord, Ms. President. Accord, Ms. President. Leslie, would you pray for us, please?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this day. We ask that you would watch over us, help us to do the right things and move in the direction you would have us to go. All these things to better your city. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amanda, anyone stand up for citizen comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, do we all agree that we've covered items four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah. I'm just also sorry, I'm a little late, little technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody agree that we've covered items, uh, up until item number nine?
Yes, including, and including item number nine.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to item number ten. Consideration of possible action in regard to resolution twenty dash fourteen. A resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the employment agreement between the City of Kennedy, Texas, and city manager William Lynn. Any motion?
Make a motion to discuss item number ten? I'll second. Discussion.
We didn't have a presentation to go with that?
And yeah, counselor, uh, essentially what this is, is this is just a clarification of some of the line items that are already contained within the employment agreement, based upon the wishes of the city council members I've spoken to over the last sixty-plus days. Um, and that's essentially what this is. However, if we're going to, uh, do these things, we have to do them in writing. Uh, and I've spoken with the city attorney on this at great length, and, uh, he and I have come to some, uh, agreements on this. That's why it's being presented to you.
Have you guys read this amendment?
I read it.
Do you have any concerns, any questions, any thoughts on it?
We had already, we had already approved the, we had already agreed on the fifty thousand deal, right?
No.
Well? No, that was something between the attorney and I when I first came aboard. He and I talked about.
Amanda?
That fifty thousand is, uh, in line with the, uh, code, um, the local government code procurement policy.
The City of Kennedy is a little more stringent than the state is, for good reason. Uh, my concern is we're going to repeal probably thirty different ordinances, and you guys don't have any idea, nor do I, of what those ordinances are until they come up.
Is the, is the attorney, is the, is the attorney on, on, on the phone now?
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm here soon.
Reviewed this, and are you aware of the resolutions that we would be, um, amending?
Uh, no, I'm not. I was not asked to review the, the city ordinances and compare them with the amended or the, um, the additions or the amendment or clarifications that are on item number five.
I would feel more comfortable at this point that the attorney look at all this first before we make a decision on changing anything. I think right now we're sitting okay with the way things are, and, uh, I really hate changing things up if we're not knowing what we're changing.
And I guess, I guess in the future, the attorney needs to review and now, now, I understand that the attorney and, 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 uh, the city manager has discussed this, but I guess in the future, the city, the attorney needs to be more, um, I guess more inclusive in the what we're looking at so that we don't have to keep doing stuff over and over again. Uh, just, just reviewing it and making sure we dot-a-dives and cross-the-tease is great, but we gotta look at, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the, the resolutions are that we are doing away with. I don't know what those are. Um, but if we're doing away with some, um, who don't know that we're doing away with them, that I would think that would be kind of something that the attorney should bring to our preview when we get to this point.
I agree with that.
Mr. Lynn, what would be? What would be some of these resolutions that would be changing that would make such a big impact if we went ahead and went with this tonight?
The only resolution that is gonna be impacted is going to be the purchase policy, which is already included in the contract at ten thousand dollars. City Attorney Rue has and I, within my first week, discussed that and discussed the need, and it was on his, uh, it was on his list of things that needed to be addressed with the city council to move the city council from the ten thousand dollars to be more in line with the local government code two-five-two dot zero-two-two of the fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that is something we're gonna address at some point in time. Uh, the ten thousand dollars does not provide, uh, the ability to efficiently operate a municipality of this size. And that's really the only one that's gonna be.
Other things would be too, before I agree to anything. I wanna know what we're changing exactly. Not just the big thing that will impact. I wanna know even the little things.
Well, James, you had, you had caught this concern, so I'm sure you've looked at some. Can you give us an idea of some of the resolutions that we would be impacting?
I can give you, I can give you what I've discovered, but I cannot identify the exact ordinance. But what concerns me mostly is it does not promote any type of unity. This basically takes every ounce of power that the city council has, and it puts it in the hands of one person. And when I say one person, if you read closely, you no longer get anything other than a report. You have nothing to say about how things are actually done. You have to read it very, very carefully. But you will get a report.
Yeah, I saw that.
Anything else. If you wanna call your attorney, you will give up that right to call your attorney, which you should never do that. And for this man to even ask you to do that, Leslie, is not right. You can't even call your own doctor. You can't call your engineers. You can't talk to your own judge. I, I can't believe he would even ask you to do this. I'm, I'm serious. I'm floored.
Adolph, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
When you and I spent over an hour going over this, in any way, form, or fashion, does it give up the right? Does not the?
I, I think.
Does not the city council and the mayor always retain the right, regardless of the wording of this amendment, to reach out to the city attorney? That this only makes it, brings things into compliance without the city attorney communicates with the city manager on all, all things that does not include the city manager?
It, there should be some, and we talked about this, uh, we have different, I guess, um, viewpoints on it. I, I believe since it's going to be contractual terms, uh, as an amendment or an addition to the city manager contract, that it should be as, as, uh, as clarified as much as possible. I think probably a, a good idea that will answer a lot of council members' questions, if you go over the, uh, uh, the addendum A and go over each of those, uh, bullet points and explain the reason why you're requesting what you're requesting from the council.
I would be open for that.
Same here.
And if you have any specific concern, you, you could, uh, address each specific bullet point, and then, uh, uh, you could, um, direct me to, uh, uh, answer a question or whatever with regard to, uh, uh, any other concerns that you may have. So, if, if everybody has an addendum, addendum A, that's probably the, the easiest way to go through it and, and explain what those bullet points are. Uh, uh, that, you know, the, uh, and the city council could ask your question on each of the bullet points.
Yeah, 'cause there's only ten bullet points.
Okay, I'll start. Approves all purchases under fifty thousand dollars. Right now, currently.
Yeah, I think we should shut the top down, but I, I would suggest the top down. That way, it would, uh, if everybody has that addendum in front of them, uh, that'd be the easiest way to do it, and I will, uh, and I'll take notes on any reference of the council or questions the council wants me to address.
Let's start, let's start with the very first one, I guess, and go down so we're not lost and we're, we're going back and forth.
Okay, start with the first one. I, and, and is William gonna do the reading?
I, I would.
I can, I can do the reading if y'all want, whatever y'all desire. Just let me know.
All right, well, serves as the chief human resource officer, conducts internal investigations regarding personal matters, employee complaints, accusations, and grievances, develops and participates in the employee counseling and performance review process.
This particular bullet point? I'm sorry?
That's already part of his preview. That's already part of his job right now.
Exactly.
That is. And, and the only difference is, counselor, is that this is more, this more clearly identifies with that space. This is one hundred percent in alignment with the wishes of the five members of the city council at the interview that I had with you guys here in Kennedy. That everything in that first bullet point is everything that you all mentioned you wanted me doing.
Yeah. So let's go to the next. Here, here, no, I'm, I'm not done on that. So this is what you're saying here? Right now, we have a city secretary who starts the human resources. Is that correct?
We have a city secretary who does human resources. Being in charge of human resources and handling human resources are two different things.
Okay, that, that's fine. That's a statutory position, okay? You can't stop us. Nobody can stop us from communicating with the city secretary.
I'm not doing that.
Right here. It's not in the state that we would be doing that.
Who would do that? You don't wanna argue. You wanna let me talk, or do you wanna argue?
You're making a point, but I'm saying in this first topic, you don't say that we're forbidden to, uh, engage in conversation with her or do anything to stop from talking to her.
Hey, so who does your internal investigations right now?
I'm doing them right now.
Oh, I'm asking the city council. Who does the City of Kennedy's investigation, internal investigations right now?
Since I interrupted you, go ahead and answer for me because the answers are just gonna lead to argument. So go ahead, James. Who does them? It's supposed to be our city inter- uh, city, uh, manager, if I'm correct.
Yeah, that's what I said. The city manager, the city manager should be the one that's doing it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but who is doing them?
I don't, like, we don't know who's doing them, James. If we knew who was doing them, you know, we would, we would answer your question, but if you know something that we don't, just say it. Who's doing them?
I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to figure out. If he's already doing it, why would he be so eager for you to change this?
I don't think.
I don't think he's changing anything.
Yeah, there's no, that's what I'm saying. There's, 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 there's only a thing in here that's an actual change. The rest of it is just stuff that he, we, we have already told him. That's what we want him to do.
No, you have to go to the repealer. He puts a repealer in it. Anytime any of this comes up in any other ordinance, that's it. This one overrides it. And until you know what every ordinance is, this is a waste.
Okay, let me clarify something in front of the city attorney, for the city attorney, for the council, for the mayor, for the residents who are listening in. You need to understand law and the hierarchy of law. In a municipality, there are three types of law. There is an ordinance, there is a resolution, and there is a proclamation. A proclamation is the lowest form of law. A resolution is the next highest form of law, and an ordinance is the third highest form of law. A, a, a resolution can never, ever repeal an ordinance. Never. You only adjust a resolution with a resolution. You only adjust an ordinance with an ordinance. One does not supersede the other. That is why they exist, 'cause they exist for certain, different things. So, Mayor, your comment about this repealing ordinances, this will repeal zero ordinances within the municipality of Kennedy because it is a resolution. Okay? We have to have something that we put in writing, and it has to be bound by the council making a resolution. They will resolve to either approve it or not approve it tonight, but they will resolve to do. It is not an ordinance. So, it doesn't repeal any ordinance.
Okay, does it repeal other, uh, resolutions?
You don't have any resolutions that this is applicable to. None. Everything is by ordinance on a law. The repealer is just put in there.
Yeah, I, I would have your attorney go through all of this and identify anything that's gonna be affected. It is pretty serious. Attorney, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, did you review this?
I reviewed the, the amend- addendum A with the city manager, uh, to, more to understand what he's requesting. And, uh, and so that's, uh, uh, we went over all, all items here, and I needed some clarifications, uh, so I could respond to any questions that the council may have with regard to each bullet point.
You got those clarifications?
Yes, yes, with regard to, yes, the bullet points. I had some concerns over some, and I told city manager, you know, I will inform the council of my concerns with regard to a particular bullet point. Uh, but it's, it's up to the council to decide, um, you know, what, you know, what they wanna do or understand, and, and the city manager was very good in explaining what each of those bullet points are for. Uh, that is why I thought it was helpful, that it is helpful for him to explain to the council what, uh, why, why it's in there and, uh, address any concerns that any of the council members may have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Somebody said they had a question?
I do. So, right now, how does it read, where you wanna change this, the very first bullet? How does it read right now?
It just, it just states that I'm the human resources director, uh, in the contract. It doesn't go into much detail as, as to what exactly that entails. And, and bullet point one and bullet point two, and, uh, they go hand in hand. Okay? That's all human resources stuff that you all have asked me to champion in my interviewing process. I felt that when I reviewed the contract, that while it did, while it did state, it did imply, let's use that word, it did imply those things. I felt that it was, it was best served, my counsel, if it was more transparent and more clear.
So we've covered item, we, the point. Those two bullet points are of what we asked you to do when we hired you on.
Yes, sir.
Go to bullet point three.
Is there any?
Point three.
Performs internal investigations regarding purchasing and procurement procedures and ensures compliance of local government code two-five-two subchapters B and C. Makes recommendations to council regarding findings.
And that one doesn't allow him to change anything. He just makes the recommendation to us after he's found out the information so that we can make a decision. Is that correct, attorney?
Uh, that is correct. Pursuant to the statute, uh, the purchasing and procurement procedures are all bound by that. And, uh, and with regards to, he makes recommendation as per his findings. So, uh, yes, that is, uh, it's similar to an investigation he would do in bullet point number one. Um, but in this particular circumstance, he would make recommendations to the council, who will have the final decision, making authority on that.
Okay.
So everything right up until this point, everything is still through council? He, he find, he makes a finding, something important, brings it to us, we discuss it, we go forward with it, or we halt it till we get more information, correct?
Is that a question to me, sir, or to the city manager? Is it, Adolph?
To you, Adolpho.
Okay. Well, the, um, the first one, uh, this is just the city manager's job to, with regard to, you know, internal personnel policies, employee complaints. City manager is the person that handles those, and with regard to, um, counseling or performance reviews, uh, the, the council is not charged with, uh, with hiring or firing employees. Uh, it's the, uh, yeah, yeah, the certain ones with regard to the, yeah, uh, the city manager, city secretary, or that sort of the pleasure of the, the council. Uh, so, it's, it, it makes them, I guess, it, it refines his role as the city manager's duties and responsibilities with regard to employment issues. Uh, there's nothing in this, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, go. I thought you were done. Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no. Um, and, uh, and, and the second one kinda ties into that. Now, with regard to personnel policies, uh, I believe it would be a, a, uh, it's good to confer with the city attorney because personnel policies always change. There's some, uh, uh, you know, and I, I think it should be in coordination with the city attorney. It doesn't say that, but with regards to any, uh, uh, issues that, uh, that have, uh, you know, pay ranges or descriptions, it should be run by the city attorney, in this case, uh, employment person and, and at, uh, uh, at the firm. Now, uh, with regard to any, any questions or any questions that may be left open, uh, you can have some qualification language with regard to it. There is a conflict between addendum A and the ordinances of the city, uh, the ordinance of the city prevails. Uh, that would, if we have that type of, uh, conditional language added to it, then I think a lot of your questions regarding overturning any certain ordinances would be addressed because it would be subject to that condition. Um, with regard to the, uh, employment issues, um, the, you know, uh, uh, the city attorney is always there to confer and, and, uh, with the city manager. So, but those are the duties, those are the employment, uh, responsibilities of the city manag- manager, uh, anyway. So, it just basically clarifies that, okay, you know, the city manager's gonna do this, so there won't be any questions.
And they all, oh, for, they all report to him, correct?
Yes, sir. He's the, he's the, he's the chief guy of the city. That's correct.
Chief guy, yes.
Okay, are we ready to do the bullet point four?
Acts as the city's authorized representative to enter into contracts for services destined fifty thousand dollars are those listed in local government code two-five-two point zero-two-two. I guess bullet point number five would tie into that. Approves all purchases under fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And, and is it, is that a question to me or to, uh, or to the city manager?
Uh, to either one of y'all. Uh, both of y'all. Both people talking to each other, correct? Are those three separate ones?
Well, first, let me clarify something, counselors, uh, real quick. Uh, section two-five-two point oh-two-two, uh, of the procurement code, uh, is what is called general exemption, uh, and the general exemptions for having to go out for bids. Uh, and rather than going through the whole thing, and, and real simply what this boils down to is what's called PSAs, or professional service agreements. Okay? Later in the agenda, we're gonna address this. Uh, what this does is, this, uh, this section essentially says you can go out and do a professional service agreement, uh, for less than fifty thousand dollars, and you don't have to go out for procurement, okay? Uh, we could hire a city attorney off the cuff. Uh, I could walk out into the street and say, hey, are you an attorney? And they could say, yes. I could say, do you wanna be a city attorney? Yeah. And, you know, you could give them a PSA right then and there. Um, that's one part of that. The other aspect is bids that would be less than fifty thousand dollars. Now, the next bullet point that says all purchases under fifty thousand dollars, that's a little different because what that enables the city manager to do is to move things forward as we need them. Uh, if we need a vehicle, uh, if we have a, a, a piece of equipment breakdown that costs twenty thousand dollars, it enables the city manager the ability to purchase the equipment, uh, that the staff needs in order to effectively do their, their duties without having to wait for a council meeting, to go through the whole process of three bids and, and that kinda stuff. So, it, it kinda lets the city manager run the municipality and keep the wheels moving as need be. It's not a blanket, uh, it's not a blanket purchases under fifty thousand. It doesn't give a city manager in any, in any municipality the autonomy to just go out and spend money. That's not what it does. Um, responsible city managers will, will navigate that very, um, gingerly uh, to make sure that the only time they even actually use that is when it's absolutely positively unavoidable. And, and that, but it has to be there in order to be clear.
Okay, I have a, I have a question on this, and, um, this is actually to the entire council because it was my understanding that we knew that that was something that was necessary because otherwise, we have to keep calling special meetings, and we've already had problems with people not being able to attend special meetings so that stuff that's over ten thousand dollars can get taken care of. So, I, that was my understanding. It was something that we thought as a council we needed. Was my, was, was I wrong in that assumption?
No, that's exactly what we. No, that's exactly what we had discussed.
Leslie, or everybody, if I can just chime in real quick, I'm okay with the fifty thousand dollars or less purchases, I just don't want it open ended, meaning if, 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 if we're going to have a line item in the public works department and it's for equipment or maintainers or whatever the case it might be, a backhoe, I think we need a budget for it, and then if it's budgeted for in under the fifty thousand dollars, then allow them to make that expense. The only concern I have is making large purchases and it was the budget, meaning that the approved budget, it wasn't said, oh, well, I'm going to put an extra forty thousand dollars in equipment because we have a backhoe and a forklift that are kind of on their last legs, whereas, oh, we have forty thousand dollars in equipment, we can just use it before it's over. I mean, that's kind of how I feel, I don't know how everybody else feels.
So, so if I understand what you're saying, if that line read that the fifty thousand that they was going to spend had to be in the budget, they can't spend fifty thousand dollars that's not in the budget.
Absolutely, and I, and I'm just, I'm just saying, I would, I would like to know as a council member that when we are setting the budget, that we are aware that these monies are set aside for this contingency, or we expect there to be a replacement backhoe or whatever the piece of equipment might be, um, or if it's some, uh, park equipment saying we're putting an extra twenty five thousand dollars for this new playground set, and then it's budgeted for, and then he can authorize that payment outside of city council because the city council already approved that budget with the intention of spending that twenty five or forty thousand dollars.
Councilors, may, may, may I for a second? Keep, keep in mind one thing. This purchases, it doesn't matter what we say in approved purchases, it's not governed by a clause in an amendment. Purchases are governed by the finance code of the state of Texas, which states we may only spend money in accordance with the approved and adopted budget of the municipality, which means, town floor mires is concerned, that's the only way we can spend money. That's why every time we go to do something for a line item, we have to amend the budget if there's not money in that line item, it's because of the finance code. The, the approval of the fifty thousand dollars to, to spend is, again, it must stay within the confines of the finance code, which means it can only be spent if it was in the approved budget. It can't be spent if it's not in the approved budget because then council has to amend the budget to spend it. So that's kind of the way the whole finance and budget thing works. You can't just spend money, you have to, you can only spend it in accordance with the approved and adopted budget, and that's per the finance code of the state of Texas.
So, I have a question. So Justin, kind of going with what you said, I want to make, understand what you're saying, kind of what he was saying too, he can't spend any money out of another line item until he lets us know that he's moving it. Is that, is my understanding that right?
Yes, what, I, I guess what I'm just trying to say is if we put, if, let's say we have an equipment line item of a hundred thousand dollars, if we're going to have an equipment line item of a hundred thousand dollars, in my opinion, let's say a backhoe costs sixty thousand, um, a forklift costs twenty thousand, and then we're going to have twenty thousand dollars in contingency within that line item for repairs, I personally would like to know beforehand, when we're adopting the budget, you know, this is why there's a hundred thousand dollars in there. A hu- sixty thousand dollars for a backhoe, twenty thousand dollars for a forklift, and twenty thousand dollars for unforeseen or possible maintenance repairs because the, the, the lawn mowers are, have bad oil leaks or whatever the case might be, then we know that there's some funding there that could go for repairs. I just don't want to see a hundred thousand dollar line item when we're in the budget process and we, we in our mind are anticipating to buy these two pieces of equipment, and then fifty thousand goes out of there, and there's not enough money in there to do what we initially during the budget process intended to do. So I think, I think if in the budget presentation, it's kind of lined out, like this is what all these funds are going to go to, and there's going to be a little caveat of miscellaneous repairs within there, then I, then I'm okay with that, if that's what's presented, but if we have a hundred thousand dollars and then the city manager not saying he would, but went out and spent fifty thousand dollars on a piece of equipment that none of us were anticipating on buying, and then we're, then we don't have enough money in there to buy those original two pieces of equipment.
I have a question on that, Justin. Can we in the budget designate that that's going to be for a certain item? We can put it in the line item for that category, but can we designate, actually designate that that's what it's going to be for and then not use it for anything else?
Yeah, so absolutely, so like, we could, like, for example, the county did a salary survey, so in the salary survey, we created a line item where the, we put X amount of dollars in there and it could only be used for that, but I, I don't, I, I think maybe this, the, the approves all purchases under fifty thousand dollars in accordance, yes, with, uh, local government code two five two, uh, I just, I don't, I don't, I, the only concern and the only concern I have is we have a, a, a full piece of pie there and we're anticipating during the budget process, us doing this, that, and this, but we're trying to generalize it so we don't have a million line items, and then the money falls out and goes to something we weren't anticipating, and then we, we have to either do a budget amendment to get our initial warrants, or we have to, we won't be able to purchase everything we were wanting to purchase originally. Does that, that answering your question, Leslie?
Yeah, I under- I understand that part, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, even though we have a forklift and a, and another piece of equipment that we know is going bad, and we know we're probably going to have to buy it in that budget year, but if we're able to repair that product and use it and still utilize it for another budget year, and we don't spend that money on that, we still have that money in that line item that we could use to buy an item that we actually need that, because a, 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 a truck was in a wreck and we, and we, and it, and it broke, or, or, you know what I'm saying?
I get, I, I completely get what you're saying, so I guess my question is, if it was an unforeseen, um, um, accident like with a truck and there's extra money there, are, do you want the city manager to be able to instantly be able to buy that, or the council talk about it before replacement, or would you want to see budgetary equipment that was budgeted purchased at the city manager's discretion without the city council's approval, even though it is an approved in budget? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, like, do you want him to have full reins, or do you want unforeseen circumstances to come to city council?
I'd like for unforeseen circumstances to, for us, uh, for us to have some idea about it so that we know what's going on, but also I want, for me, I want the city manager to have enough to run the city, uh, because all of us, you know, all of us have jobs, all of us have commitments, and when we call a special meeting and you don't have enough people, everything on that agenda goes to the next time we can do a meeting. It's going to be at least seventy two hours again before we can do that meeting because we've got to wait for seventy two hours and we've got to, you know, we got to dot the i's and we got to cross the t's before we can have the meeting. I just want the city manager to have enough to do the job that we're expecting them to do, and then, you know, we're holding them accountable for a timeline, but we're the reason that timeline is not being met.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Can you give me an example of, uh, something that would happen or fall under this bullet point?
Uh, yes. Okay, so you have, um, pumps, uh, at the water station, that, that pump our water, high service pumps, and we can say that we have, just for lack of, you know, argument's sake, we'll say we have three, and we take these three pumps and we, and we sit down, we do our budgets, and we say, okay, we have two pumps working, we're going to budget this year, uh, to purchase the third brand new pump, okay? So we put that in the budget, we go through the whole process, y'all adopt the budget, it's already in there for that. All of a sudden, uh, we're going along and we buy this third pump, and we spend that money in accordance with the budget that was approved by council, and then all of a sudden, out of the blue, something happens and one of our other pumps goes kaput, and we have to buy another pump, and this pump costs, say, twenty five thousand dollars. That would be an excellent example of this. It would enable me to go ahead and say to the director of public works, go ahead and get the pump, get it out there and that, and I'll approve the, the purchase of this because council gave me that authority. Then, of course, what I would do, as I have done in sixty plus days, is I'd probably send all of y'all an email telling you what I did. Uh, that way you would know what was going on in the municipality when it happened, and then I would probably re-mention it again at a council meeting, uh, in my city manager report. Uh, so what it does is it enables the city manager the opportunity to take action immediately for something, uh, that is needed to keep the city moving smoothly, and, and that would be a real good example of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I would, I would like to say something in response to that. We, you already have that. The local government code, it allows you to repair under emergency circumstances. If we lost a high, a high service pump, all you would have to do is purchase that pump and report it to the city council.
However, Mayor, in my contract, it does state ten thousand dollars, and so that number has to be amended in writing. That is why it is on here, is to amend that number to be in accordance with that local government code. That's the only reason it's on there, is to amend it. Nothing more, plus.
We all agreed that that ten thousand needed to be changed.
We're discussing, yes.
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 Are we ready to go to the next bullet point?
I just think you guys should know everything that's spent at the city hall, that's what I think.
What's been spent at the city hall?
You should, you should know, you should have the opportunity, the freedom of choice to know.
We do have that opportunity. At any given time, we can find out what money has been spent for what at city hall, just by walking in there and sitting down and asking, but I don't know how we expect someone to manage our city if we don't give them the proper tools to manage it with.
Every other city does it this way.
They have fifty thousand.
Uh, fifty thousand. Council members, this is Adolfo, uh, if, if I may, on the, uh, bullet point four and five with regards to authorization of contract, it's, the, our ordinances say otherwise, uh, they, our ordinance should, I, I think the conversation is, uh, can be amended, however, the, with these two bullet points, uh, we have to amend the ordinances, and these two sh- should be subject to any ordinance amendment, although the statute it does provide that, but we have to bring our ordinances in accord to these two items.
So then we have to bring back ordinance twelve and one two oh nine oh six and amend it from ten thousand to fifty thousand?
Yeah, yes, I would, I would recommend that because it's, you have to coincide with the state statute, uh, it's a good idea to do that, uh.
And the state statute is.
Yes.
Fifty thousand dollars and less, less than fifty thousand dollars, I should say, yes.
Okay.
So those two bullet points could be subject to the city, uh, amending the ordinances that affect these two bullet points.
And that has to be on a separate meeting, it can't be tonight, or could it be thrown in there and what is the purpose?
No, no, we, we could do that at the next meeting, uh, it can take much time to, uh, amend those ordinances. Also, with reference to local government code two five two point zero two two, I emailed each individual city council member that, uh, provision, or that section of local government code, uh, Mr. Lynn was referring to, and, uh, that will give you a broader idea of what he, his example was, and plus, it includes others as well. So if you want him to take a look at that, if you're at your, uh, computer and, uh, and, uh, I, I, you should have, you should have it in front of you, uh, and, uh, because it's, it references in the, um, in this addendum, then you should have, uh, the, you should be able to see it, so I, I just sent it to you, but again, uh, those two bullet points, uh, the ordinance should be amended, uh, before those two go into effect.
Everyone good on that one?
Yeah, I. One more time?
I'm good. I'm good.
I'm good, yes.
Nobody, nobody's going to read two fifty two that Adolfo sent you?
I'm reading it right now.
Looking at it.
But it, it says the same thing that he said, it, it's got the same stuff in there, talks about why you would have, why you would need to have that, what you can purchase with it, why you should have it that way, it just missed a whole lot more examples than what he gave. Again, I, I, I reiterate that I would like to see us give a city manager the opportunity and the tools necessary for us to succeed as a city and move forward so that we can get some stuff done, but that's just my opinion and my thoughts.
I agree with that, I, I, I really do. We hired him to do the job and we want him to, you know, give him all the tools that he needs.
And raise it, and going from ten thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars will give him more opportunity to do that. Ten thousand dollars, that's long overdue to be risen, even the state rolls it to fifty thousand, we need to meet what the state says.
You know, I'm going to remind you guys that in January, we had a discussion very similar to this, and I, I remember over and over, we said, that's just part of our job, if we have to come to a special meeting, we're going to come to that special meeting, and we're going to get these things approved, that's just the way it is because somebody else had asked you guys to relinquish some, some authority like this for change orders. Do, does anybody remember that meeting? Because it was in January.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't want to relinquish change orders, change orders would still have to come to us. This, uh, purchases, not for change orders. Change orders still got to come to us.
There will be no, no reason, they'll just make a new contract, you, there won't be a change order, you just make a new contract because it'll be a purchase then. It's the only reason they have change orders, they leave those open so they can get up to twenty four percent of their original contracts, uh, without a new contract.
This, Adolfo or? Mr. Lynn, when we do a change, is it costing the city when we do a change order? I'm sorry?
Usually, this is Adolfo, it usually.
On the change order?
Uh, this is Adolfo, yes, usually change orders are cost adjustment upward.
Okay.
Change order is a change order, it's not, it's not a, it's not actual a purchase that would call under that category, that, in that two, in that two five two oh two two.
Right, so it's. You and I have an agreement with the city, with the city, Leslie, and we had a contract and. and we had a contract and it was fifty thousand dollars. We couldn't do a change order because y'all didn't authorize him to have the change order, right? But you would- he would be able to give you and I a new contract up to fifty thousand dollars.
All I can say, if was that, if we're- if we're not gonna do the fifty thousand dollars, you guys are gonna have to fix your life so when a special meeting is called, you can come. And all of us know that that's not the case. You- you can't make every meeting. I would love to think that everybody could, but we've proven that that's not the case.
I'm okay with the fifty thousand dollars. Um, after uh Mr. Lynn said that he would notify us um of the larger purchases, I would be okay with that. Just to be notified that a pump went out, we didn't expect it. Um, we have enough money in the budget to do so. Here, let me just forward out, we need to get this done right away. I'm gonna send y'all, I'm sending y'all just email, we're gonna spend fifteen thousand dollars, whatever the price might be. I'm just letting the council know.
And he's been very uh-
Well, man, should be.
Yeah.
Uh, you- I mean, you- you're very good at informing us and I- I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, very transparent with us, letting us know everything that's going on. Any little thing, he's letting us know.
Name one thing, Brandon.
Uh, incident-
It's like the grass situation with uh, um, I mean, the situation with the- the loud noise that um a resident had complained about. He's got a whole- that whole uh email here explaining what happened, what went on, who did what, and what the chief did and how- how the- how we come to a resolution.
Did he let you know he authorized two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar worth of concrete in a change order at the city park?
I didn't see that.
I have to go back.
Well, man, I say that, I'm gonna expect you to show me that change order first thing in the morning.
I've just been held into the city council.
If you can't show me the change order, Mayor, then we're gonna have another problem on our hands. And I'm gonna tell you right now, you said something from attorney, I'm not gonna tolerate this from you.
I'm not gonna tolerate what you've been doing to this city and you're- you're- you're hiding behind it. And you're not allowing the city council to do their job, you know it as well as I do.
Actually, Mayor, actually, Mayor, if you wanna call out somebody, call yourself out. You have- you have held this council hostage for the last several months. I have all the numbers here to show the council the things they need to see. The moment I walked through the door, the council guys had been opened as to what's been going on in this city financially before I got here. And all I'm gonna say about that, Mayor, is this. I was not the one in charge before I got here. There was only one other person who was running around this town telling people what to do. And believe me, every engineer that works for Hanson has mentioned that person by name. And I'm gonna tell you right now, Mayor, you wanna- you wanna go toe-to-toe, we can go toe-toe. It's unprofessional, very unprofessional. But I will tell you this, I will not stand for you calling me out on things you did. And that's that, Mayor. You wanna call me out, you call me out for stuff that's happened in sixty days. You don't go calling me out for stuff that you authorized and you went around telling people to do.
Yeah, we are gonna have a problem, if that's what you're saying.
I'll tell you what, Mayor, my council's there, they can decide, do whatever they want, they hold all the power.
Yes, sir, they do.
Uh, this is Adolfo, trying to, I suggest we uh resume the review of the addenda. Uh, with-
I would- I would second that.
Let's move on.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Okay. Hold on. Okay. The next bullet point, we will go to, so we wrote, that tied in both fifty thousands, we'll go on to the next one. Acts as a signatory on all accounts and documents at Texas Champion Bank. In parentheses, of course, it says effective uh March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, opens and closes the depository account on behalf of the city, opens and closes investment account on behalf of the city in accordance with chapters two-two-five-six and two-two-five-seven of the Texas Government Code, the City of Kennedy Investment Policy, and at the direction of the city council.
That's something that's already part of his job, right?
Yes, sir.
Was there any discussion on that one, or can we go on to the next one?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Have we executed a surety bond to cover William Lynn, acting within a scope of work?
The bond we have covers the- the city manager position. So that bond is-
Has he been named?
The bond does not name the- name the individuals, it just names the titles.
Okay, so that's a yes.
City secretary and each utility billing clerk and municipal court clerk, I believe, as well.
Okay, so that's a yes or a no?
Yes. Well, it doesn't name him as William Lynn, but it- it title a city manager.
Okay, so, but a bond is, it has been executed?
Yes, it's been in effect, yes, sir.
Okay, how about a background check?
Okay, Mayor, now you're delving into personnel matters.
Yes, this is out of the uh-
I'm gonna stop it, the attorney- You're delving into personnel matters at this point that are not applicable to the particular addendum, Mayor.
They ve- they very well are, if we're ask- if you're asking-
They're not.
All this authority-
Oh, they're not. Not- they're not on the- they're not on the bullet points of this deal that we're talking about. We're not on-
That is second of the bullet point.
Turn to the next item.
Thank you.
All right. You guys are gonna give the city away and-
We are moving to the next item.
Initiate transfers of monies between city funds as is necessary to support of city operations and report such transfers to city council.
As part of his job now.
Correct.
Next one.
Serves as the city's agent responsible for initiating, reviewing, auditing, inter- interpreting and enforcing contracts with all professional service agencies, contractors, subcontractors, and department heads. At manager's discretion, refers contract needing further review to the city attorney, works with the city attorney regarding the terminations and enforcement of contracts and report such actions to the council.
As part of his job now.
I agree.
Agreed.
Next item?
I- wait a minute, I-
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Hold on, hold on.
Doing it?
I have a question. So on the bullet we just read, right now, it says that he has the authority to end contracts. I thought that was us doing that.
Is that a question, this is Adolfo, is that a question uh for me or for the city manager?
Right now, as it stands, any contract or terminations, don't those come through the council, not the city manager, right now? Is that- isn't that how we're doing it?
Uh, is that question addressed to me? Uh, um, this is Adolfo.
Whoever can answer that, Adolfo or the city manager now.
Okay, um. Uh, city manager, go first.
You wanna handle this, or you want me to handle it, Adolfo?
I'll- I'll go ahead and answer it, but then uh the, with regard to enforcement of contracts, with regard to this uh bullet point here, uh, I would uh just bring the council's attention with regard to the enforcement of contracts should be a city council action because it involves uh other liability with regard to the decision whether to uh follow lawsuits or proceed under certain types of uh enforcement activities. Uh, there's always uh something that changes or you don't know. So I- I think uh in- with regard to enforcement of contracts, that should be a city council decision with uh asking the city attorney uh his or her advice. Uh, and trying to is, a- a- and with regard to i- i- interpreting, uh, I uh I spoke with Mr. Lynn about it, uh, it has a different legal meaning than- than uh the uh normal uh definition interpretation. Uh, and it- but the program does have works for the city attorney regarding terminations and enforcement of contracts and- and reports. So uh the city manager uh can interpret uh and consult the city attorney uh when needed. So uh a- and I think that Mr. Lynn knows the difference of- of practicing law and- and consulting attorney and- and, you know, uh, and interpreting certain provisions of contracts and ordinances. And uh, so I- I think that part is- is clear, uh, except the enforcement of contracts. Mark, that- that is something that uh I think, transfer your question, councilwoman, yes, before the city did or does uh uh make the decision uh with regard to enforcement of contracts.
But all the contractors and subcontractors, all the people that are doing the job around town, they all- they're all supposed to report to the city manager, correct?
That's right, but we're the ones that decide-
We're the ones that make- Yes.
We get and which ones we don't, and which ones we- we terminate and which ones we do and don't. So I think that should still stay with the city council, I don't think that should be something that we should change. I think we should leave that the same.
As far as the final word on it should come from the city council. Because he's the one that's still gotta inter- He's the one that's- he's still the one that's gotta interact with them, he's still the one that's gotta check on the progress. He's still the one that's gotta make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And he's still the one that's got to concur- confer with the attorney to find out what we need to do as the city council to move forward on it, right?
Yes.
That's right, but he should not be the one that says, "Hey, uh, we need to terminate this." No, he can talk to the attorney and get information and ask, you know, all those questions to see what we- our legal standing is, but it should still be the council's responsibility and authority to terminate those contracts, not the city managers.
Okay.
May I, may- excuse, may I address this?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, it- it's- it's, and I know, I'm gonna use this phrase, it's real simple, cause it really is. The- the process, the way it works is like this. You have a contract with contractor A. Contractor A, whomever they are, comes to work, does a poor job of working. There are things you can do within the confines of the contract that don't require a- a council decision. You can choose to um accelerate liquidated damages, they're already spelled out in the contract, and these type of things. This is the type of stuff that we're looking at. When it gets down to the point where the contractor has done completely substandard work or the contractor is just refusing to do the job, then what happens is you go to the next step, which is calling their surety bond. Their bond that they post guarantees that they'll do the job, or if the- if the city calls the bond, then the city gets the money back that they expended on the project to the contractor. That's a very negative thing for a contractor, is to have their bond called. When you get to that point in- in- in the relationship, then the city manager is the one that determines, "Okay, where are we?" First they got- they're the one, they say, "Where are we in this relationship?" Okay, uh, we need to call the bond. Manager does not have the latitude to call a bond. He then has to partner with the city attorney to find out how to start the bond process. In the meantime, he has to go to the city council, inform the city council of what's going on and why we're moving down this road. When the city attorney gets the process done and gets everything and it's ready to go for that, then it comes to the city council. City council then gets presented with this line item to do this. The city council then votes whether to call the bond or to not call the bond. But you have everything done up to that point in time so that when the city council is presented with it, they're presented with all the documents they need, they have all the information in front of them, ready to pull the trigger, and they're the ones that say yes or no, not the city manager. The city manager just is at the point with all this that he's the one that decides, "We need to go to this step, we need to go to this step, we need to go to this step." And then once we get to this step, he turns it over to the attorney and then turns it over to the city council, who then ultimately decides whether or not they wanna proceed with that step or not. It- it- it always- it always comes back to the city council in all of this, always.
And then- then why are we changing it? If it always comes to the city council and we're already doing that, then it should just stay that way. I don't think we should change that, even the attorney said it should be in the city council's hands, and I still think that should stay that way. I don't see how this will benefit if, you know, if we're doing it that way now, we should just leave it the way the attorney says we should leave it. I don't think that should change. It- it should still be our decision, we should be in every part and every step of that, especially with the contractor that we're paying a million dollars to. I wanna know- I- I wanna know every single step, and if we have to come to a meeting, I'm gonna be there. So I don't think that should be changed.
It's not a change, council, it's a clarification. That's what I'm trying to get everyone to understand. These are clarifications of the duties you've already given me. It's just that some of these duties are so ambiguous, they have to be clarified so that there's no question as to what they are. There have been incidences arising that has caused me to not be able to do my job where I need to do my job because of the ambiguity of some language. Therefore, we have to make it more transparent so we can move forward.
I still, okay, I get that, but I really would rather the attorney look at this very, very closely and come back to us and tell us, "Yes, this word can be changed," or "No, this word can't be changed." Because he just said that it should be the city council's decision, not yours. And now you're telling me it's not giving that power away from us, but I- I don't get that. If he said it is and you're saying it's not, then it's not clear. So I need for the attorney to look at this very closely, every single bullet, and explain to me what it means in layman's terms, so I'm understanding, so I can feel confident in doing this changing wording of whatever you're asking for. So right now, I don't agree with this wording change until I know the attorney a hundred percent says, "Yes, this is what this means, this is what's gonna affect and what it won't affect." Right now, I don't have that confidence.
So you're not comfortable with this bullet point?
Go ahead.
Adolfo, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
I was go- I was gonna ask Adolfo, Adolfo, when you went over this, did you see that this was one that we should not do? Don't give me googly gob, just give me yes or no.
I think it needs to be reworded.
It's not- it's not taking anything out of the council's hands. It's just being broken down and described a little bit better for a little bit more clarification so we can understand it. It's not taking anything out of the council's hands. At the end of the day, it'll come back to the council and we'll make the final decision whether it's a yes with the agreement of the city manager or no, with the city- with the city manager. It's not automatically giving him all the power to just go, "Well, you're- you're no longer gonna work for us, I'm bringing you in, and there's nothing that we can say about it." Is that correct?
It needs, no, that part's not in there, it's- it's, as Mr. Lynn described, that- that's what the process is. This bullet point does not- does not say that, that's why uh the language needs to be changed.
Is this clear, Adolfo? This language right now, is it clear to you? It's not?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay, then no, it's not clear.
With regard, with regard to that bullet point you're talking about.
Adolfo, we need you to get real and learn that we want everything clear. We don't like googly gob. We wanna understand it completely. So if it needs two pages for us to understand it, then that's what we need to have. 'Cause we wanna understand. All of us wanna be comfortable in the decisions we're making. We don't wanna have to assume anything. That bullet point, you'll need to go back over it and change it, help, uh, Mr. Lynn, change the wording so that it meets and gives us the clarity that we need to have.
And not only that bullet, any other bullets that you see that, you know, we kinda passed over some of them pretty quickly. Nobody really said anything. Um, and Adolfo, if you feel like some of these are not clear, then make them clear for me. Because I, I'm not a hundred percent clear on some of these. And I know we kinda skipped over them, and I get that he needs to have the fifty thousand. I get that. I do. And I understand that, you know, having to have that amount to be able to spend without having to come to us, I get that. But I just want this to be super, super clear. That way I understand exactly what's being tweaked, changed, whatever you wanna call it. I wanna be confident saying, okay, I'm good with this. Uh, you know, we give him the things that he needs. 'Cause I agree with that. He needs the things that he needs to make his job efficient and make things run well in the city. I get that. I'm not saying that you're wrong in trying to do this, Mr. Lynn. I just wanna be super one hundred percent clear of what is being said here. That way we all understand without any doubt what we're changing or fixing or tweaking or whatever you wanna call it. That's all I'm saying.
And, 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 and this is Adolfo, and I will take that as council direction to, um, I guess look over this, the bullet points and, and see if they're clear or otherwise. Uh, I shall, I shall do that.
In that case, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this agenda item until the next meeting. And Adolfo, you have until the next meeting to go through this and make sure that it is crystal clear for all of us.
Leslie?
And I'll say.
Yes, sir.
A- A- Adolfo, were you asked to review this before this meeting?
No, I was not.
So that might explain why you're explaining it to us now. This was not forwarded to you.
It was, it was, uh, I received the package. Um, but with regard to reviewing, I, I don't, I don't, I guess create my own work. I, uh, but with regard to, uh, uh, instructions on certain items, I have.
It was in your, it was in your packet, right?
That is correct. That's correct.
It was in your packet, but you didn't create more work for yourself, right?
That's correct. I, I take if, if it's a, uh, direction from the city manager or council member, then that's direction from the city to, to, uh, look it over it. 'Cause if I had to look over every, uh, uh, any, every item in the agenda, then that would be a tremendous, uh, legal expenses. But if.
I wanna, I wanna be clear. So if there's something on the addenda or the packet that you got, and I'm looking at it, you know, before we have our meeting, and there's something I don't understand or I want you to look at it, I need to make sure and send you an email and say, hey, can you please look at this and review it and make this more clear for me? So when we're at our meeting, we all understand. Is that what I'm understanding? That we need to make sure and tell you, hey, can you look at this i- line item and tell me, please explain it better for me on our meeting? Is that correct?
That is correct. It, it's either the, the, you call the city manager or you call the city attorney. And, uh, I, and if you're calling, I'd be more happy to.
Do you need to hear from more than one of us to do that?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Hey, hey, guys, I want y'all to understand this though. This, this item made the agenda before the attorney received it. If you want him to look at something, you gotta give him direction. The city manager's gotta say, hey, I've got ordinance changes I'd like for you to look at. If not, he can't bill the city for it. If you want him to look at something, you gotta give him those directions. But he didn't receive it before the agenda came out.
Well, he's not gonna receive anything before, he's not gonna receive anything before the agenda come out. How, how could he receive something before the agenda and we not be violating the law?
Because he doesn't vote. He's a legal representative.
So anything that the city manager wants or any of us want on the agenda, like let's say, like something like this, he can go ahead, ahead of time and send it to the city attorney for the city attorney to review it and, and do whatever he needs to do so we're prepared for our meeting to make sure everything's clear. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
There's Adolfo. Uh, yes, the, the city manager has a discretion to do so, to review certain items, uh, to review all the items or not to review any of these.
Okay, I understand.
But he can ask you that before an agenda is put together.
Sure, at any time. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So my motion is still on the floor to table this until the next meeting.
And I second that motion.
Discussion. So everything that was read earlier, there was, nobody understood anything. We're just moving on with the assumption that everybody knew everything.
I didn't.
Long time ago. If you had any, we went down everything in reading and no questions were asked. So now we get to the bottom, there's a, there's a discrepancy here that we found, and all of a sudden, everything seems like it was a waste of time.
Well, no, we were going to. And, well, listen to what I'm saying. I'm saying we're going through all of them. This next bullet, the one that we just read, there was some things that I didn't understand. So I wanted some clarity. And the attorney says there's some things that need to be worded correctly. So this is all one, one item. We have to stop it because there's something that we don't all agree on, and attorney needs to tweak the wording. So, yeah.
Everything prior to that, we all understood, correct? So that's the one.
I was good with everything. Brandon, Brandon, I was good with everything before that. I don't think that everybody else was, but I can't make people say anything.
Yes, sir.
I'm good with it up to that point. Can we just move on to the next two and then get clarification on that bullet point?
No, because we need to. It's all, all, it, it all needs to be, we all, need to have understanding of all of it and clarity of all of it so we can approve the whole thing. We can't approve it in pieces.
Well, no, I, I'm not talking about approving it. I'm just talking about if we, if we've got, we need clarification on that one. Can we move on to the next one? See if we need clarification on that one? We're, we have two left.
Well, no, because I want him to go through all of them. What's the point of going through them if he's still gonna have, I want him to go every single bullet and review all of them. That way when we review it and say, well, this bullet.
That's a question I asked. Did you understand the previous one?
We're just gonna waste time going through them if we're still gonna want him to review them. So really, he just needs to review all of them, make it really clear, and then we can go on it at our next meeting and make a vote.
Well, but like Leslie, but like Leslie said, he understood the top ones. Did you understand the top one? You, when we're reading them, up until this point? I, I understand what you're saying. Can we continue going? So if the next two have any discrepancies, we can make a, a clear point to him that, can you better break this down so we can get a better understanding of these last three? Because up to now, we're all understanding up to the point where we're at right now.
That's what I'm saying. He's gonna have to go through.
Guys, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We can keep discussing, but realistically, going over the next two not gonna, not gonna give us the opportunity to act on it. It's just time that we will spend, that we could spend on the next item and be close to the finishing, and then come back to this when everything is clear. And, but if y'all wanna keep discussing it, I will take my motion off the floor and y'all can, we can talk for another thirty minutes on it.
No, I think we should just go on to the table this one, just like the motion's on the table.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number eleven, consideration and possible action in regard to authorizing a contract with Shannon Monk Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant phase two project in the amount of one million four hundred sixty-one thousand even, and to authorize the city manager to execute this contract. Is there a presentation?
I'm there. It's a real short presentation. City council approved the contract at the last meeting. This is just, uh, they accepted the bid. This is just where the city council will, uh, approve the contract so that we can issue our notice to proceed.
Okay. City council?
And, and wait a second there. Sorry. There's one more thing that Hanson asked me to state, that this project is being performed as part of an enforcement action brought by the TCE Q. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we approve item twelve on the agenda for the amount of, I'm sorry, item eleven on the agenda for the amount of one million four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. If there's no discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn? Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number twelve, consideration and possible action in regard to city, city manager, man, um, my apologies. Item number twelve, consideration and possible action in regard to city manager William Lynn executing contract with Park and Play. Presentation.
Park and Play contract was approved by the city council earlier this year. They authorized the mayor to sign the contract on that. Park and Play has been working at the sports complex without a signed contract. They cannot order the shades without a signed contract. City secretary and myself have both reached out to the mayor numerous times over the past several weeks. The mayor has, uh, been unavailable to come up here and sign the contract for whatever reason. Um, but we need to get the contract signed so Park and Play has an executed contract, which I can do tonight if council authorizes me.
Any movement?
Oh, I'll make a motion to consider item twelve on the agenda.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Discussion.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Hey, this, this is part of the, this is part of our original budget for them, right? For the Keasley, Larry Keasley use sports complex?
Yes, sir, it is. And they've been working without an executed contract. And I will tell you this. I have been working with Mr. Mankins and them, and they're very, they, out of every contractor that has done their business down here in the city of Kennedy for that sports complex, they by far are the best to work with. They have never complained about one thing to me. They've been very understanding about everything, and all they're really asking us to do at this point is execute contract.
And I have the minutes here where we approve the contract.
Why has it not been executed?
I was, I was contacted one time. That was it. I was unsure that it was executed. And to eliminate the hassles of people accusing me of making these deals with engine builders, uh, conducting work on the city's behalf, until it was proved to me that you guys approved it, I wasn't gonna sign it. But I was contacted once and once only. And to prove it, just like they emailed you the minutes that they highlighted, at any time, they could've done that for me, but they did not. They refused. So, and there was a change in the whole thing. It's about a five thousand dollar change, and it's because of the color and some anchor bolts. So I did not have the authorization to sign anything. I mean, I don't, I mean, how many, look through my phone. You guys have access to my, all my records. I mean, I communicate with city hall left and right. I mean, I email you guys on everything. So. That's all I have to say on this.
Well, we need, we need to get the, we need to get the contract executed. We need to get it signed. And really, I don't, I don't care who signs it, but it need to be signed tonight. It needs to be signed some, it needs to be signed tomorrow morning. So.
I agree.
And is, do I need to give city manager authorization to do it, or can you assure me that you will be by to sign it tomorrow?
If you authorize me to do it, you know I'll sign it. I've signed hundreds, if not thousands, of documents for the city every time they call. All of a sudden, I just stopped? Nah, I don't think so. Yeah, I'll just get fined.
Excuse, counsel, you can check your iPads and your email. I just emailed you a correspondence the mayor sent me acknowledging that both Ms. Hines and I both have reached out to him to sign this contract. He was stating that he was unaware that council even approved this contract. He was present at the meeting. The resolution was signed. I looked at that, uh, looked at the roll call. He was there. He conducted the meeting. The mayor knew it was signed. All I care about at this point, I really don't care about why he's not signing it. I just care about taking care of Park and Play and Mr. Mankins, 'cause they have been very well to work with. And I think we owe them at least to get this contract signed, which if you authorize me to do it, I can do it in the next three minutes.
Well, I think it's with the way the agenda item reads, we're gonna have to have Mr. Lynn execute the contract. So I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the Park and Play contract and authorize the city manager to, uh, sign and execute.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Counselor Brianna? Counselor Brianna?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn? Counselor Lynn?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. I couldn't get your response, though.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Fine?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you. Consider, item number thirteen, consideration and possible action in regard to the biometric time clock. Presentation. No presentation?
Mr. Lynn, you have information?
Yes, there is. I was actually grabbing the Park and Play contract to take care of what council needed done. Okay, so if the last council meeting we had with biometrics came up, the main concern was getting the cost back on the biometrics. That was the one thing the council asked me to take a look at. I called, I reached out to the organization. First off, allow me to, uh, inform everybody. The biometrics did not, and I repeat, did not cost as much as everybody thinks they did. The actual biometric module only cost twelve hundred dollars for both of them. There were two, six hundred a piece. Uh, as I was speaking with the, uh, people at Time Plus Plus, uh, on that, their. Uh, as I was speaking with the, uh, people at Time Clock Plus, uh, on that, their concerns was the fact of the length of time that we were requesting a return and a refund versus the purchase. Uh, so, I spoke with them a little bit more, and informed them of, of the direction we were trying to go, and that we didn't need the biometrics. This is what they told me what agreed to. They agreed to allow us to remove the biometric devices, or the modules, as they call them, from the time clock. The time clocks will still work as regular time clocks, so we're not out the devices and we're not out functionality. Uh, they then offered to give us, uh, support hours in exchange for giving us a check. They refused to give us a check because of the, the delay in the time of requesting this. However, they're giving us two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars worth of free support for these time clocks whenever we need it. So, for twelve hundred dollar product, um, we're getting twice, almost twice the value back, uh, in support from them. It is something we would normally pay for, uh, i- if we needed them. So, we have ten hours roughly of support we can use that they will not bill us for whenever we decide to use it. So, we're getting our money back there. They also told me I could do whatever I wanted to do with the modules. If I wanted to sell them on eBay, I could sell them on eBay. Um, she gave me carte blanche to do whatever I wanted to do with them. So, that's where we are. Um, we're, we're getting more than our money back on it, uh, and funds that we will expend if we keep it. So, we keep the biometrics, we're gonna have to pay annual support, which is gonna end up costing us more than the twenty-two hundred dollars.
Make a motion to consider item thirteen on the agenda.
Second? I'll second.
Discussion?
For me, this sounds like a solution to a problem that we had, but it's up to the council to decide whether they want to go that way.
Okay.
Do we know, uh, Mr. Lynn, do we know what the annual fee is for support?
The annual fee is right around two thousand a year.
Two thousand?
So, we don't have to pay that as long as we're not using the biometric, correct?
We, we will have, we will have ten hours of support, which is twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars worth of free support. So essentially, if we ever needed support, we wouldn't have to pay for it up to that dollar amount. That is correct, as long as we're not using the biometric.
Right, but, but that wasn't, that wasn't her question. Guys, whoever's banging, will you stop so we can hear? Um, the question was, how much is our annual cost to use the time clock system?
Oh, the, uh, the, the cost to use the system? Um, the time? I, I don't believe there's a cost to use it, we've already purchased it. There's just annual... Right, there's just like, um, like with any software that you have, you have, um...
Right, right. Annual dates and all kind of stuff like that, but that's not something that we, that's not part of it that we pay regardless. We can, we can use that credit that we got for that, up to ten hours, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lynn? Did they give you a time, did they give you a time limit on how, when we had to use that time? Or like, if we don't use it in one year, are we okay to move it over to next year to use that time if we don't use it? I'm just curious, I don't wanna, they, it is to make sure they didn't put a time limit on this to use that credit.
Right, very good question. No, ma'am, there's no time limit on it. It is, uh, it is, it is pegged to the number of hours that we use. So if we use one hour this year, three hours next year, three hours the next year, and then three hours the next year, that takes roughly four years to eat up to ten hours. We're good, we won't have to pay until we eat up to ten hours.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just have one question, how soon are we gonna be able to start using this?
We've been, I believe we've been using time clocks already. I, I hear people, I hear people punching in and out. It's just that the biometrics were never activated.
Okay, I, I didn't know that.
Any movement?
I, I have one more question. So, Mr. Lynn, he, they, we could keep the biometric, whatever that thing is called, we can keep it, you can do whatever you want with it. Let's say, two years down the road, they decide, oh, you know what, let's use it. Can we use it then? Will we have to pay a fee to start using them? What would happen in that case? Just in case for some reason they decide to use them?
I'm sorry, Counselor, could you please repeat your question?
Yes, sir. So, let's say, you said those machines, the biometric machines, we, uh, we're gonna get credit for, but we don't have to send them back to them, is that right? You said you get to do whatever you want with them, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, let's say that you decide to keep them in the vault, whatever, and then two years down the road, we decide, you know what, we should use them. What, could we use them then, or will we have to pay a fee, or once we say we're not gonna use them, we can never use them ever again?
Um, I would, I would think on that, what you're gonna have is that they're already activated and compliant with the particular devices that we have. So, it would probably just be, uh, an issue of just putting them back in to the device, and then making sure that the devices work with our, or that they integrate, uh, with our back office system. So there may be a cost at that point to integrate with the back office system, uh, if we do that.
Okay, I was just curious, you, you could do whatever you want with them, I was just thinking, well, if we save them, could we use them later? I was just thinking.
Right, we can, we can always take them and just put them in a box somewhere and mark them and stick them in the vault and let them sit, and then if, you know, somebody somewhere down the road decides they wish they had them, and they found them and pulled them out, you know, they could go through the process at that point in time.
Okay, I was just curious.
I have a question. So, Mr. Lynn, you said everyone's using the time clocks?
Well, I said, I hear people punching in and out. I was presuming they were using those time clocks. Uh, I just spoke with the city secretary, and she said it's not those time clocks that they're using, so, I don't, you know, I, I have to see what they're, they're actually using. But I hear people sound like they're punching in and out, so... Which is something I've gotten in the city anyway. I've seen people using, um, time sheets, and time sheets are never away to go, it provides too many issues for the FLSA, so, you know.
So, once we decide on this, on this item, then you go ahead and make sure that all employees are, get the new time clock system?
All hourly people will punch in and out on the time clock system, yes.
So, right now, you said you're not a hundred percent sure that everybody's using it yet?
No, because I still see, I still see on, on Ms. Hines's desk, those old time sheets where people handwrite their time in, and, um, there's lots of issues that go along with that. So, when we get this resolved, then we're gonna get these time clocks going right away so that we can get away from that, because we don't need those potential issues that go with people handwriting time.
Right, and could you, uh, tell me a timeline when you could, uh, once, if we want to approve this, or, or, you know, whether we do or not, but, once we do, um, could you give me a timeline when everybody will start using it? You think it'll take you about a week or two to get everybody on, them, or what is your timeline?
Let me check with Ms. Hines to see if she's already got the time cards to go with them, but if, if she doesn't have the time cards to go with them, then it would be, um, lag time waiting on the particular time cards to come in. If she has the time card, it'd just be a matter of installing and waiting till a pay period begins, so that we can start it at the beginning of a pay period. So, I would say no later than, uh, July one at the very latest. But most likely sooner if we have everything already in place for everything else.
Hey, could you just keep us, uh, whenever we're using them?
Did you ask if I could just keep you all informed?
Yes, sir. If you'll just let, well, once we get all this done and approved, if you would just keep us informed on, on when everybody's using them and where you are on that timeline, just if, okay, yes, we're, we're starting Monday, or we're starting, you know, whatever, just kinda keep us in the loop of what's happening?
Oh, most definitely, always.
Thank you.
My, my question is, you said everyone except salaried employees will punch in? Why would we not want salaried employees to punch in?
Mayor, I make over thirty dollars an hour, uh, when you break my salary down. Do you wanna pay me twenty-four seven hourly? Because my job means I have to literally work twenty-four seven, 'cause I do receive text messages and emails sometimes at two, three in the morning from members of the governing body, uh, and I have to, you know, take care of these things. So, it's just not good practice to make salaried people punch a time clock. It's not even industry practice doing it, and most municipalities don't do it, let alone private industries. I don't, I don't recommend it, and as the person, as the person who's currently the HR person in the city, I won't do it, and I told the council that in the interview process. So, you know, salaried people do not punch a time clock, because we need them available when we need them available without us having to worry about them having to punch in, punch out, did they get it punched in? Did they get it right? Did they get this taken care of? Plus, it opens the city up to a whole, whole plethora of risks that we don't even wanna go into. So, yes, only hourly people will punch a clock.
Did you want me to answer your first question?
No, sir.
Okay, if we owe you money for working late at night, we need to pay you, just like any other employee, if...
Mayor can't afford, mayor can't afford me to be hourly.
It, it doesn't matter.
We, we can't, we can't afford for any of the salaried employees to be hourly, just like this meeting.
I understand that. I understand that completely, I'm just trying to figure out why you wouldn't wanna track a salaried employee. We had an incident one time with an employee, we didn't, we didn't get his day to hire right. Okay, if we would've had a system, we would've known the exact day and time he was hired, and we wouldn't have had to go through all the nonsense that we went through. I mean, any ti, I mean, I don't wanna hide behind the time clock, just because...
Salary employee, a salary employee's information will be in the system, just like a non-salary employee, but they will not punch a clock. Their information is in there.
Okay, it is to answer the question that I was asked, do I wanna pay you? If you're owed money, of course we do. If somebody's working excessive hours, it doesn't matter if they're salaried. It's not right that we work them excessive hours and then we hide behind the time clock. That's my point with it, that's all. I'm not gonna hide behind that time clock and say, well, I don't want them to punch in because we're working them more than we should be working them according to the federal law. So I was just answering the question that I was asked, do I wanna pay you thirty dollars an hour? That's all.
Quick question, Mr. Lynn, how many salaried employees again are, do we have?
Uh, every, um, every director is salaried, um, so that's, uh, four, and then, um, myself is salaried, uh, so that makes five. When we do get a, uh, Parks and Rec and, and some other people that we're looking at bringing aboard, they'll be salaried as well, but it's not a majority of the staff. We do, we do go out and we do, um, create numbers, uh, I say create, but we do take, and when we do our budgets, we do, you know, start with a salary, but we break it back hourly for everybody else. Um, so, we're not talking a whole lot of people, and really, most of the people that we're talking about, I'm in contact with fairly frequently, so I, I have a pretty good idea of when they're, when they're working and when they're not, if that's anybody's concern, but I, I'm just gonna say it, I, I have a level of trust with, with my directors that they're not gonna slip off. Uh, most of my directors that I have currently work well more than forty hours a week, and I know it. Um, so, you know, they're putting in time.
Did that recently change? I'm sorry, did that recently change? 'Cause I, I thought there were only like three, or maybe four, that were salaried.
Well, you have the city secretary and the city manager, that's two, the police chief is three, the fireworks director makes four, and we have a code enforcement officer who's salaried, uh, so that's five. And then you're gonna, then we're gonna be adding the Parks and Rec person, which would be six, and...
Okay, so, now it's only five?
I'm sorry?
So now it's only five?
That, that, that's current right now today, but then, you know, like I say, we're gonna be adding a Parks and Recs director, which will be six, and then we've got some things on the agenda that, you know, may, may drive that number up a couple of people, so... But we have a total of fifty-three team members in the city, and only currently being paid, five of them are salaried.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just thought it was a little bit less, but, uh, that's fine.
Any movement?
So, do we need a, we need a motion on this item?
Either that or, uh, staff direction?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, approve using the new time clock system that we have purchased, Time Clock Plus, um, and that all the hourly employees will punch a time clock, and we will be, this will be effective as, as soon as possible that we get everything in place to make it effective.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, councilor Wynn, the, the item is for, to go away from the biometrics. That is what we are talking about tonight, is to go away from the biometrics. The council...
It does make sense.
Yeah, you see, back in December, the council addressed this in an open session, so you all have to rescind your original idea of using the biometrics. That is what we're discussing tonight, is going away from the biometrics.
Make a motion, make... We're gonna make a motion to, to not use the biometric part of the time clock.
Leslie, make sure you capture everything you'd like in your motion, sir.
Thing, but...
Second?
Because we're not you, we're not using the time clocks right now, right?
No, Ms. Hines corrected me on that.
So, we were not using the time clock, we need to do away with the time, we do away with the bio, not use the biometric, and establish using that, using the new time clock, correct?
Yes.
But we can't say nothing about using the new time clock?
No, we were gonna use the new time clocks regardless of what you decided. That was never for consideration. The consideration was just the biometrics. We bought the new time clocks, they're able to be used without the biometrics, we're going to use them anyway regardless of what the motion is on the floor. We're gonna use them.
Oh, when are we gonna start using those?
I, I, when we get off the phone today, I'm gonna get with Ms. Hines to make sure if we have everything that we need to start using them, but we're gonna start at the beginning of a pay period, 'cause that's the right way to do it.
I agree, I agree. Okay, so, all you need, all you need is a motion to do away to not, to use it, use them without the biometric time part of it. And you will start using it right away after we do this.
We will start using them? Right, we will start using them after we get through this.
Fuck, okay. Then I will rescind that motion, I will make a motion to take action in regards to the biometric piece of the time clock, and we don't use it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number, item number fourteen, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to posting a request for proposal for professional services agree, relating to a city attorney. Is there a presentation?
There is.
Okay.
Councilor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I thought I heard you call your mayor, so I'm pausing.
Hey, there was a dog barking, guys.
Okay, um, so, a couple of things on this one are, are in play here. The first thing that's in play is that we do not have a PSA with our current law firm. All we have is an engagement letter for being the interim city attorneys, really all we have. Okay, that's the first thing that's in play. The second thing that's in play is you should go out for an RFP every three years for certain categories of professional services, that being your attorneys, your auditors, uh, your grants administrators, and then any other professional service agencies that you have had over a three-year period of time, you should go out for an RFP anyway. So, this is basically just a formality to go out for an RFP. It's not a technical termination of any agreement with anyone. What happens is that with the RFP, we get people who are interested to be the city attorneys, council reviews them, council then makes a decision what they want to do. But this is normal practice that you really should do. The only deviation from this, and Mayor, I believe you were the one who, uh, brought this up at one time in the past, uh, is to, uh, have a complete staff attorney, where you go out and create a position and hire someone and bring them in. That would be the only deviation from this. So, that's kind of where we are on that.
Yeah, I did until Justin brought to my attention that we couldn't afford it.
And I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to consider item fourteen on the agenda.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Discussion.
I, I personally believe it's time that we should go out for RFPs, um, for the city attorney. Um, I brought this up several months ago, and, or maybe, it might be close to nine months, so a year ago, and it got shot down, but I still believe we need to be competitive and look at pricing, and as well as other firms who are interested in working with the city, just like the city manager said, doesn't mean that the ci- the current city attorney firm is going to get terminated. Let's just see who's still interested, and when that was brought up in that meeting, Dan Santi, um, had basically said, well, we'll see if we submit one or not, and that shouldn't be, I, I, I don't care who the firm is, they shouldn't scare us. It's not making sure we're getting competitive pricing, and we're looking at, uh, something every few years, like it was mentioned.
Sounds good to me.
I'd like to see it posted as well.
Anybody else have movement?
Make a motion that- Go ahead, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Brandon.
I thought someone was going to talk, that's why I said, go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion, but you go ahead.
Make a motion to consider I- item number fourteen, and take action regarding to posting a request for a proposal for professional services relating to a city attorney?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number fifteen, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to posting a request for proposal for professional services relating to a grant administrator. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Um, we have, uh, I don't know if you all remember in my interviewing process, whenever you all were, um, explaining to me about the project the City of Kennedy has going on, I asked you all how much of the money you had gotten from grants, and, uh, you all informed me it was primarily all bond money. Um, there's a lot of money out there in grants that we could be using for a lot of the projects that are going on in town, or projects that we want to do. Uh, getting a grant administrator, uh, someone who is knowledgeable about grants, someone who has been around the grant game a while, that has a reputation for, uh, acquiring funds from municipalities, is only an asset to the municipality in helping us to make our budgets go much further, um, because of how grants work. Um, I believe it's an excellent opportunity for the city, uh, for us to possibly acquire somebody, um, who would be able to do this on behalf of the City of Kennedy, um, that has experience. Uh, grant administrators are not paid, uh, until they're, you know, they go out for grants, they're usually paid administrative fees from the grants, it's part of the money we can use. Um, so, uh, that's why we're bringing this to the table today, is to help us to go out and capture more of the dollars that's out there, uh, being offered, so that we can, uh, do more and make our budget go further.
Good enough.
I'll make a motion, um, we consider agenda item number fifteen.
And I'll second that. I'll second it.
So, the one question that I have, um, I work with a grant administrator with the county very often. Are, are we going to consider this professionals, oh, yeah, I'm reading the agenda, I don't know if I'm saying it. So, this will be considered professional services, so ne- each and every time we apply for a grant, are we not going to have to go out for RFPs, uh, for a grant administrator, once we hire one? Then, for each of the grants we apply for, they're automatically deemed our grant administrator?
Um, there are, uh, a lot of grants where that will be applicable to where it won't matter how we did this. There will be some grants, depending upon when we get to those grants, and how, um, how far timeline it is away from the date that we do this. They may want to see an RFP, um, that's closer to that. And now, that's not going to negate what we would do with our grant administrator that we have a PSA for, as far as other grants. We would just have to go through the formalities of doing that for that particular grant, so it'll be, um, uh, it'll be something that'll be pegged to a particular grant.
Okay.
And, and just so I'm clear on this, the grant administrator is not a position that we pay. They get paid based on the grants that they get, correct?
Yes, sir, so what happens- Right, what happens with a grant is that you have what's called a match, and usually what municipalities do is they take their portion of the match, and that's what they use to pay the grant administrator with. Um, so, i- it's not like a salaried person, where we're writing them a check bi-weekly. They only get paid per the grant that they're working on.
Okay. How soon will we go in search of someone?
Uh, we will be working on the RFPs, um, depending upon how many of them we get done tonight, uh, first part of the week. Uh, after we get back from the holiday, I'll be looking to put them out.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we take action, uh, in regards to posting a request for proposal of a professional service relations, service, uh, related to grant administrator.
I'll second that.
Second. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number sixteen, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to posting a request for proposal in accordance with Section Eight of the City of Kennedy Investment Policy relating to a city depository. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. Uh, this was an item that was moved from our April meeting, um, where we had the, uh, the Texas Champions Bank. Um, their, uh, depository agreement with the city expired on March thirty-first. Um, we need to go out for the RFPs for this, uh, as per the investment policy.
Okay. Any movement?
I'll, for item sixteen on the agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Um, it was my understanding that we were already in the process of doing this, but, um, what I'm finding is my understanding is not as clear as it should be, so I'm going to ask some more questions. If we do this tonight, when do we send this out, and how soon can we get some action done on it?
Um, well, the, uh, um, Mr. Ruiz is our, uh, attorney representing the law firm tonight. Back in April, it was Ms. Trevino. Ms. Trevino had made the suggestion to council that we, that you all just make the motion to continue on in the old agreement until we could get this brought tonight. What we would do, Councilor Wynn, uh, to answer your question, is the same as the rest. I will begin working on these very diligently, uh, to get these out ASAP, uh, next week, so that we can get them out and start getting, um, interested, um, parties generated. Um, so, these RFPs, just so you know, for all of the RFPs, uh, they will go to TML and, as well as the, um, the newspaper. Uh, so, we will be putting them in two different places, just so you know. But we will be working on it, uh, right away. These will become high priority items.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we take action in regards to posting a request for proposed in accordance with Section Eight of the Ci- of the City of Kenny and Kennedy Investment Policy relating to the city depository.
Second.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other dis- if there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Councilor Breonis?
Yes.
Councilor Wynn?
Yes.
Councilor Sine?
Yes.
Councilor Conno?
Yes.
Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number seventeen, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to creating an engineering department and hiring a full-time staff engineer. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir, there is.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, with, we've got all these projects going on in the city, but these are not all the projects that as a municipality we're going to have going forward. We're going to have a lo- a lot more projects that we're going to have to undertake, uh, to move us where we need to be. Um, in the interest of expediting things and, uh, making it, uh, things a more fluid, if you will, uh, creating an engineering department is, is the most ideal way to go. Um, it'll provide us with the expertise that we need, uh, from an engineer, uh, as well as it will, um, save the city funds. And, uh, just to give you some, uh, quick numbers, um, we, we have paid engineers just this fiscal year alone since October, one point three million dollars, uh, this year. Um, the, uh, the ONET, um, and I, I don't, uh, ONET is a place where, uh, human resource managers go that has, uh, job descriptions, uh, that has, uh, job codings, they do salary surveys, uh, everywhere across the country. Uh, it is actually where employment lawyers go whenever they're writing, uh, job descriptions, um, to look for them. So, ONET says that we are in the coastal plains region here, and a civil engineer in the coastal plains region has a, uh, has a low salary of forty-nine, nine fifty, and a high salary of one twenty-four, seven seventy, with an average salary of about sixty-nine, seven. Um, so, when we look at ONET for the state of Texas, um, the state of Texas as a whole has a low of fifty-two, two, with a high of one fifty-nine, eight thirty, and a median salary of eighty-four thousand and ten dollars. Um, by far, those numbers are, are savings for the same people, uh, that we have been, uh, paying, and we use several engineering firms, uh, currently in the City of Kennedy. Um, so, what I did was, I, I looked at some numbers there, and I thought, well, you, you could hire an engineer and, and pay them a decent salary, and then benefits and everything, and maybe hire what they call an engineering tech, which is EIT, uh, as well. Uh, we could actually, in the City of Kennedy, once we begin doing budgets and moving things around, like we're going to do in the budget to begin with, we could possibly support an engineering staff of, uh, two engineers and one EIT with benefits. And just to, um, keep the numbers round, uh, we just, uh, just say a hundred thousand dollar salary for each of those people, um, which wouldn't be that, but let's keep those numbers round for right now. We would be looking at a total salary and benefits package of only three hundred and thirty-four thousand a year, um, for in-house engineers. Um, so, for one year, we would save a million dollars. Uh, over, uh, over a two-year period of time, we've paid engineers two point four million. Uh, then we would end up saving about one point eight over two years there, and, uh, uh, our total, we went back to twenty-seventeen, uh, just to see how much we've paid engineers since twenty-seventeen. And we've paid engineers since twenty-seventeen about four point five million dollars. So, when you do the math, uh, we can still get the expertise, we can get the experience, uh, we can get everything we need in an engineer, um, and we can do it at a cost savings to the city.
So, Mr. Wynn, when you say an engineer, you're talking about one or two, three people are going to take care of the severe problems that we have in the City of Kennedy?
And that's all it takes, Mayor. It doesn't take a hundred people to do this job.
Wow. I'll make a motion that we consider agenda item number seventeen.
Second.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
So, we're going to find an engineer that is experienced in all aspects, like water and, you know, because we have lots of things going on, we have lots of different things going on. So, this engineer is going to be for that, we're going to find somebody that's going to be able to, uh, have experience in all these areas and all the areas that we're, we're doing right now. Is that, is that right?
That is correct. Yeah, if you consider what, you know, um, so like, in the medical profession, you have different types of doctors. Okay, well, in the engineering profession, you have different types of engineers. You have aerospace engineers, uh, you have electrical engineers, you have mechanical engineers, you have civil engineers. Civil engineers deal with structural things of a municipality, your infrastructure, building, buildings, concrete, uh, all that kind of stuff. So, when they go to school, they go to school and they learn all this stuff, but then when they get in the workforce, they, they learn that, and when they get certified as a C, as a, as a professional engineer for civil engineering, they're certified on those requirements there. So, when you look at what a municipality really is all about, you're looking at a civil engineer for most of your, most of your items. Occasionally, you might need a mechanical engineer for some things, whenever you're building things. And that's why, whenever I did this, I kind- And that's why whenever I did this, I kinda looked at a possible, uh, two-man crew as far as engineers go, maybe one civil, one mechanical. Um, because then that would give us the experience and the expertise in both of those fields. Um, they would definitely have to, we would definitely make sure they had AutoCAD experience, uh, which would then enable them to, uh, design things on a computer and, and things of that nature. Um, uh, so that they could draw up the plans and the blueprints and all that kinda stuff and make them look really good for us and that. So, you know, we would, we'd definitely look at all these types of different things. Um, so yes, to answer your question, we can actually get what we need, uh, out in the private marketplace and bring them in-house.
So have you, since you've been here, have you had any engineers reach out to you and show an interest at Kennedy to say, hey, do you guys need one? I'm just curious if somebody has already reached out to you or you have somebody that you're thinking might work in other cities that you've worked for?
Um, well, you know, I, I've been around the engineering profession for a while due to family members. Um, I myself started out in civil engineering, um, back in the eighties. Um, so I kinda keep a breadth, uh, of, of people and whenever I have engineers doing work, I'm always talking to them, asking them questions, learning from them and seeing. Uh, I've had some people, uh, you know, ask me questions such as, "With all the projects you've got going on, why don't you have an in-house engineer?" And I thought that was kind of odd. Um, but when I look down the road, five, ten years from now, the, the difference between what's going on today and how things will be going on is that the City of Kennedy all of a sudden took on all these projects at one time. And really, that's not what you do. You, you take one project, you get it moving, you get so far into that project and you go to the next identified project as that project's beginning to wrap up and you keep a steady flow of projects going. You don't do twenty projects all at once. I know some of the projects were brought about by regulatory requirements and I understand that. But when we look to the future, what we're looking to the future towards is we're not looking to have twenty projects going at one time, all trying to finish up at the same time. And so these engineers asked me this question, I thought to myself, you know, you guys are right. You know, an in-house engineer would be of huge value to the City of Kennedy, especially with everything that's going on today and everything that needs to go on in the future. And so I began exploring that opportunity and looking at that and talking to people I know, asking them questions, you know, trying to gain insight, uh, 'cause I didn't wanna do something like this and be like, you know, just hanging out there to dry. And whenever I gathered all the data that I had been asking everybody and talking to them, it, it was just so obvious when you do a cost benefit, uh, analysis of this, it, it just is just overwhelming that I put this on the agenda and bring it to you guys, that we go in-house.
So would this position be a position that, uh, the city council be involved in as far as hiring? Or would this be a position that you would hire, uh, solely on yourself, like city employees?
Well, what I would do with this particular position, it would be a director's position, which would answer the city manager. Um, but what I would do in this position is I would take a different, I'm gonna take a different approach than hiring a normal director. Um, because we're dealing with a person who has a, you know, skill set, um, that is, uh, sought after worldwide. Um, what we would be looking at doing is doing the interviewing process, uh, having the director of Public Works in on an interview with them so that we can make sure that the engineer and Public Works Director are gonna work real well together because, uh, they'll be working with, together a lot, so we gotta make sure that that's gonna be there. Then we would have the council involved, um, in, in leading the engineer and talking to the engineer as well and asking the engineer questions as well. So i- it's gonna be a holistic team type of process that when we get to the point, it'll be, okay, council, I've narrowed it down to X number of people, I'm gonna be bringing these people to you to talk to and you all can get to feel them and then we can discuss it together, our thoughts as to who we think we would want to, you know, be our engineer.
Good, because I would really like to be involved in that.
Did we get a, did we get a motion to, on se- did we get a motion on seventeen?
Yes, I did. I did, I made the motion.
Okay.
No, Mr. Winn, this is Justin. Oh, sorry, Brenda, you can go ahead.
No. Oh, I was just gonna say, 'cause I, I'm glad you said that because I really would like to be involved in that, especially from, like you said, we do have lots of projects and we hope to have lots of other things going on, um, in the city. So I would definitely wanna be involved as far as who you're interviewing, who we're talking to, um, so we can pick the best.
Yeah, and I'm looking, the, I'm looking at the dollar savings on it. I mean, we're talking some major savings that could go toward another project.
That is correct.
The one concern that I have-
What were you saying?
The one concern that I have, and it's from experience with working with the county. The county does have a road and bridge engineer and he is very intelligent, he's a certified engineer and he's been doing roadwork for a very long time and he's good at what he does. Um, the problem when you narrow it down from a firm to a single engineer or two engineers on staff, you still are very limited and you're still going to have to outsource engineering projects. So just because we have a hired one or two engineers, I just want the, the council to be aware of, yes, there is a cost savings, but do not be surprised when things are out of their scope of work and it's not that they are not knowledgeable in the type of work, it's because they're not experienced in that specific type of work. So they're, and, and Mr. and Mr. Winn, I'm not, I, I'm by no means trying to argue with you. I've, I, I've just, I've experienced this with the county that there, there are specialized projects in which the county still has to hire an outside engineering firm. Whereas right now, yes, we're doing everything outside with the City of Kennedy 'cause we don't have a in-house engineer, but there will still be outside engineering costs with in, not every project, but any large or substantial project. There's most likely probably gonna be a specialized engineer that's gonna have to come in to do, um, different type of works. And I, I just want that to be aware, uh, with the council.
Right, and I agree with-
I have a question, I have a question on that. If we have in, if we have in-house engineers and we get a spe- somebody that specializes in something, he shouldn't have to bring other people, he should be able to work with our engineering team. So we shouldn't have to pay for the, for the supporting staff, we should just have to pay for that engineer and his special bi- special ability?
That is correct, Counselor Winn. And, you know, Counselor Meyer is also correct. You know, the in-house engineer will be able to handle ninety-five percent of what's gonna come our way. There's that remote five percent where we may have to go out of house, but when we do, um, the firm that would be selected would be a supporting firm. In other words, they would work with our team and they would support our team in providing their expertise and then our team would work with them as well to help keep the cost down. And over the period of time, we're still gonna spend money even if we have to go out of house a couple of times. So it's, it's, it's just, it just, I mean, when I looked, again, when I looked at this and I, I'm looking, I'm thinking, cost here, cost here, cost here, well, what's the benefit, benefit, benefit? The benefits were far too many to ignore. And I wouldn't have been doing my council a service if I knew about all these potential benefits, even though there may be some costs associated with it, if I didn't bring it to you guys and let you all make this decision.
Something I'm concerned with, I, I don't know if you guys know this, but I, I do different things. Anytime I see an in-house engineer, all they do, in my opinion, is they become a consultant to other engineers, that's it. So while we're chasing, saving this money, I'm all for saving money. Um, I, I think we need more, more information on all this stuff. I, I think we really need to know where we're at with our, um, TCEQ violations, where we're at with our water. I, I just, this is kinda spooky to me because what, what it sounds like is we're gonna be sitting still for a little while while we're searching for this person or these three people and I don't know if I'm willing to do that.
But we already have engineers that are, we're, we're working with, we're not talking about stop working with them. We're just talking about looking for, uh, staff of our own. This won't take, there's no way this is gonna take place tomorrow, so there's no way we could remove the engineering staff that we have in place right now.
I mean, that, 'cause that's my main concern is, you know, we, 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 we could save some money potentially, Leslie. I just, this water deal's a big deal, man, and if we just come throw the brakes on and everything's over with right now and we wait to redo this, that's not, that's not gonna help us. And I wanna make sure that if you guys do want a staff engineer, that we make certain that we keep going with this water deal, what we're doing right this minute.
Yeah, we, we actually-
Been a lot of work put into that.
Yeah, we actually-
Muzzling some.
All the stuff that we have, we're moving forward on right now. We can't, I mean, we can start, look, we can talk about looking for our own engineers, but those engineers, even if they came in place, they're gonna have to work with what we already got to get that to a point that they can take it over. I don't, I don't see it being something that would happen that quick, though.
And so that's, that's kind of where my concern is, is I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a little, not against it, but I'm a little nervous transitioning, um, because of the fact that I think possibly if we want to bring in an in-house engineer, instead of bringing in possibly two, maybe bring in one and one that specializes in water, wastewater, um, and maybe like a treat, oh, water wastewater treatment facility also, as well as water lines and maybe transition a little bit and not necessarily pull Hanson completely out of it, but get them on board of what Hanson's doing, possibly looking at all of our, because we have so many TCEQ violations and maybe transition out of it, see how that works for a little bit. And then if that starts working fine, where our water lines are still being replaced, the plans are coming out, they're actually working, we're not having issues, we're starting to go into, um, storm drains and, and everything else and then with our plant, then possibly branch out maybe a, a few years from now and find an engineer that could do stuff like the civic center, the, the sports complex, or maybe, um, working on a park or something else. But I, I would be a little bit nervous to transition fully and, and then so if we hire an engineer or two and then we're still paying these under, other engineers, our costs are still gonna be relatively high, if not even more, because now we have a full-time engineer member or two full-time engineer members as well as paying for all these current engineering firms to do all these jobs for us. I'm not saying it's a, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I, I mean, better understanding, um, of wha- the direction.
Yeah, but going forward, I think we would, if we were to move forward with this, I think the, the goal should be to incorporate them with what we have, um, and have, they should have to, that our people should become the support people that they need to bill us for instead of them billing us for all of their support people and having ours just standing around. If we're gonna utilize that, we have to utilize it in a way that's most beneficial to the city, which means that, well, our people, our engineers, number one, they've gotta be sharp enough to, to get the task done, but number two, our engineering firms that we're using right now have to be willing to utilize those people when we, when we establish the next contract with them. You know what I mean?
See, but see then, I don't know how that liability works though. So if Hanson is the head engineer and they're instructing City of Kennedy engineers to do work, well, what if there's a falter, an issue? Hanson's not gonna take responsibility of the City of Kennedy engineers and it's gonna kinda be a vice versa situation. So at some point, it would have to be a transition or we would have to be paying for full in Hanson staff and then our City of Kennedy engineer or engineers. And I'm just bringing up these, these, these issues because I, I want us to really, I mean, this is an expensive transition and it could be a big cost savings transition as well. I just want us to think about all the possibilities going into this.
I appreciate that.
I just wanna think, I just wanna think, right now, we cannot risk anything going on with the water deal. You guys are aware of that. I, I just, when I read this thing, I was, the first thing I thought of was, oh, my goodness, we're gonna run off our engineers. What's that gonna leave us with, the water situation and the violations?
I don't, I don't think, worry, I don't think we have to worry about any of our engineers going anywhere since we've paid them one point three million dollars so far. I don't think they're going anywhere 'cause the checks aren't bouncing, but I do think we need to realistically look at how can we, how can we control our expenses a little bit better going forward. I don't wanna, I don't want nothing to happen to the water deal. I don't want nothing to happen to the park and I don't want nothing to happen to the community center that will be our next undertaking. I wanna see these things come to, come to full, but if, if we have the opportunity to save a half a million dollars and bring it all to, and we have the way, a way to bring it all together where we're all comfortable with it, I think it's something we should look at.
I agree with you, Leslie.
What I can tell the council of this, 'cause I, I can't say too much as far as the people I've spoken with, um, the companies I've spoken with, um, because they asked me not to. But I can tell you that of the people I've spoken with that got the ball rolling in my mind, if you will, let's say it like that, uh, they have experience doing every single thing that's going on within the municipality right now and they have a lot of it. I would, if I, let me say it like this, if this was my money, my personal money, being spent to do every project in the City of Kennedy with the current engineering team that we have handling everything and any one of the people that I've spoken to came to me and wanted to take it over, I would feel absolutely comfortable turning it over to them, knowing that they would ensure that there would not be a drop in productivity on anything, especially the water line. I can tell you-
Is this an engineering firm that you're talking about or are these a group of engineers that would be interested in applying for the City of Kennedy engineering positions?
Uh, a- all I'm saying, Counselor, is I've spoken to engineers with firms that I have run into over the years and I would be comfortable with any one of them being my civil engineer with what's going on. Um, I know that they were the ones that, you know, planted the idea, they planted the seed. Um, you know, I looked at it from a thirty thousand foot view. I've considered everything that is going on today. I've considered everything that will be going on in the next five to ten years. And when I look at this, even though there are some costs associated with bringing an engineer on in-house, the benefits still far outweigh the cost and I mean far outweigh, it's not even close. The, the, the reality is, what we have to do is, is I look at my board right now, okay, I'm looking at the East Main Drainage Project that has a modified completion date of July fifteenth. I'm looking at a sports complex that now that the contract has already been signed with Park and Play, I did that a minute ago and I notified Park and Play in an email that I've already signed the contract. So we're looking at possibly the sports complex wrapping up within forty-five days, depending upon how long it takes Park and Play to get the shades in, okay? So that's two big projects right there. We're looking at Cottonwood Office being done around mid-June. Uh, we're looking at Phase One being virtually done. We're going into Phase Two, that's what you all approved tonight, with Phase Two, the wastewater treatment plant. But Phase One is done. The RO train seat replacement is, is on the backside of being done there. I mean, that's virtually, every major project is being- I mean, that's virtually, every major project is being reduced down to just a handful of projects. So that it only funnels back toward one major project. And that one major project becomes the water. And when we start looking at projects coming off the board and projects getting done and complete, we look at the opportunity of things to be there for an in-house engineer to not be overburdened from the word start. However, whenever we go to include counsel in the interviewing process, this is going to take a longer time to hire somebody. This is not gonna be a two-week process or a three-week process. We're looking at a process that's probably gonna take us a month, month and a half to get through it. So we have to start the ball rolling today to hire the engineer. But we continue working with the engineers that we're currently working with seamlessly as we're going forward. Once we get to that point where we're ready to bring the engineer on board that we have uh begun the process with, then we begin to integrate them to the open projects that we have and acclimate them to the open projects that we have. And then we look at what their role will be versus what their role will not be on the open projects at that point. And we address it at that time. So that's kind of what we've gotta do. The longer we delay, the longer we're gonna be. The sooner we can get the ball rolling, the sooner we can get them in here. Projects are gonna clean up while we're doing all this.
Yeah.
So so all these projects that we have going on, the the six or seven projects are not gonna be six or seven by the time we bring an engineer on 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 staff. So, you know, that's that's really what this is all about tonight, is to say, hey, council. Now, this is not me just going out and hiring somebody. I wanna create a department. That's why I have to come to my council and say, hey, council, I wanna create this department, and here's why I wanna do it. Do I have your blessing to do it? That's really what I'm seeking.
I think there's still a little bit of unknown. I think we should discuss this a little more before we make that decision. This is such a big decision. I mean, how do we know that the people we hire are gonna wanna work with our contractor? Our company's gonna wanna work with our contractor, I mean, our engineer and not their own engineer? I mean, I just have some questions.
My my biggest thing is, I just wanna make sure that our water project does not get delayed, because I think almost not not almost, I know every single member on this council knows how important this water project is. And I, it it's just sort of a hair bit scary thinking about hiring an engineer and what that might do to that project. And I'm not saying that the hiring an engineer is a bad idea. It's just that is such an important project to the City of Kennedy, and we owe that to the citizens.
Well, I can tell you, counselor, that the pro- the water project, you all have one view of how big it is. But that project is much bigger than you think it is. And when I say that, I can assure you, given the gravity of how big that project really is in scope, I am not gonna do something stupid to jeopardize these residents.
Yes, sir.
But again, it doesn't matter, because all we're talking about doing tonight is creating and staffing an engineering department. The mechanics of it all will be handled on the back end. And when we're going through the interviewing process, we understand that we make it very clearly known that, hey, you're coming on board as our staff engineer, possibly, and here's the deal. We got this going on, we got this company that has a hundred and twenty days in the saddle on this. You're gonna have to integrate with them so things stay seamless. Are you gonna have a problem with that? Yes or no? If the answer is yes, I have a problem with that, move on to the next candidate. I mean, it's just that simple. Either they agree to seamlessly join or we move on to the next candidate. All the time, things are seamlessly.
I think that would cause delays, you know, with people not wanting to work with our with our engineers. I think that would delay the city on some projects, on our new projects that we might have. I it's it like Justin said, it's scary. It's scary to think about bringing somebody on right now.
I'm, I I Brenda, I understand what you guys are saying, and I and I can respect that too. But also saying that it's, you don't wanna look at bringing somebody on that could save the city millions of dollars, and if these corporations that we're working with don't wanna work with us, I mean, we're signing the check. They work for us. We don't work for them. And if they say, we're not gonna do this, just like everything else, we've got the Schrute bonds and everything else. We just say, okay. At some point, we have to decide to be the drivers.
And I, and Leslie, I understand what you're.
It's just, it's just, I think we just have, I think we just need to talk about it a little more. And I'm not saying it's not a good idea. It it's a great idea, but I think just right now, it's just kind of, kind of some shallow water. I just think we needed to really think about it, really consider it, and give it a little time to think about it some more and discuss it some more. I don't think we should just jump on this right this second. Let's let's have some more discussion about this to get some more information before we make this huge step.
Okay.
And something, and something I.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask one question, though. What other information would you like to have realistically? I hear the other.
That's where I was gonna jump in, is I was gonna say, Mr. So uh what I would like to see is, you know, Mr. Lynn, you talked about possibly having one or two engineers. And then I believe you called it an I T engineer or I T consultant or. Anyways, so you you were talking about a multi-member staff. I think that's a little, possibly in the very beginning, a little bit excessive. So like, if this was a budget hearing or a budget meeting, could you possibly come back, give us some actual numbers uh and say, look, I bare minimum to get this process going, I need one civil engineer and one assistant engineer, and at that cost, I would like to budget a hundred thousand dollars for the engineer and fifty fifty thousand dollars, and I'm just making up numbers for the assistant, so uh and then that plus fringe. And so this is what, this is what I'm truly requesting for you. And then so you say, so it's the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries plus another twenty thousand dollars in fringe, so a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And to complete the department, I'll need X, Y, and Z. So total budget, let's just say two hundred thousand dollars. And then come back, and I think this has been a great discussion, but come back to us with a plan and say, this is exactly if if I was allowed to do this for the City of Kennedy, this is how I would transition this engineering staff or team into our current plan. And, you know, this is something that I would like to task them with and move forward. And I think that would give a realization to the council, because this is also new, that we've never had an engineering department before. And then we can really consider it. So like with two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, we can do this and get this staff, and then we can look at tasking them uh maybe at the beginning, some waterline projects or sewer line projects, or tasking them with some uh uh East Main project. And in that way, we can realistically see it, where right now it's conceptual, it's, we can kind of picture it, we all wanna save money. I don't think anybody's arguing that viewpoint. I think we all wanna save money. But that way, it can be a little bit more realistic, and we can say, okay, I I can, I can grow onto that contract. And I don't know, Brenda, do you have anything else?
No, I kinda, I kinda think that, I'm kinda going along with what you're saying. I I wanna just see it all in front of me, like, this is what I can do, just like kind of what you said. I I didn't wanna go in blindsided, I guess. And I agree, we need to save money, and this would be something great to save some money, but let's get all the picture complete before we say yes.
Well, do you want me to, do you want me to answer those questions now? Because I can. Everything you ask me to give you, I can give you right now. I can answer it for you. You need a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an engineering department. It'll, that'll support two engineers and vehicles. That'll also give you the expenditures they're gonna need for additional equipment that they're gonna need. And that's for two engineers, no E I T. Okay, very simply, what you would need to do then at that point in time, once you select the engineers, is that you would, you would hire two. You would hire one civil engineer and one mechanical engineer if you're hiring two engineers. You don't need two civils. You get a civil and a mechanical, okay? You get them a vehicle, each a vehicle. So you have your budget of three fifty is what I'm looking at starting their budget at. How would I integrate them? That's very easy. Integration is just a matter of sitting down and outlining their scope. There's a whole plethora of projects that need engineers to look at, these projects in town. We could spend the night and start doing them with the smaller projects. But the bigger projects, it would be, uh, it would not be prudent of us having engineers on staff to not have them incorporated into the bigger projects. At that point in time, what I would do is I would have them sit down with me and with a particular individual or two of whatever engineering firm we're using, on whichever project we're using them on. And it would be a meeting to where they would understand that they're gonna have to incorporate and get these people up to speed on everything. There would be timelines involved with that, such as, you're gonna do this by this date, you're gonna do this by this date, you're gonna do this by this date, they're gonna do this by this date, to the point where they're actually taking over whatever project you're talking about at that point in time. It's all, it's all a process that we would have to go through. Nothing happens overnight, nothing happens at the drop of a dime. Okay.
So I think Mr. Lynn, I I thi- I think I, I think that is a fantastic start. And 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 so just kind of bringing up another, um, when something very new like this was proposed to the council about a year ago, which was my office, and there were some um um council members that had reservations. There's some council members that were all for it. What we asked when this was proposed to the council is give us an actual budget. Show us exact, because a lot of us are visual. I am a very visual person. I like to see things. And so I think you've created a, you know what you want. You've created a good concept, a great concept. And you you're you're looking out for the best interest of the citizens. And so if you could come back at the next council meeting and give us that visual aid where we could see, okay, we're gonna budget this much for salaries, this much for vehicles, this much for office expenses, this much for equipment, and then come with a proposal of saying, this is what budgetary, what it's gonna take. And then going on from that, th- these are the type of projects I would like to introduce them and then integrate them through. I think that would be a a great option. So the motion that I'm going to make is I'm gonna make a motion that we give staff direction to to create a proposal um to present to council at the next council meeting. Um, if in, I, that's what I would like to see. If anybody would like to second that motion or add add to it, just let me know.
I'll second that.
Okay, no, we're not discussing.
Discussion, sir.
Well, I was gonna still discuss real quick, had a, had a question. Then we discuss.
Excuse me? You 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 can, sir, you have the floor.
Okay, no, no, okay, no, I was just making sure, I thought someone else had cut in. Thank you. Last year of budget, we'd all discussed, well, every year our budget keeps going higher and higher and higher. And Mary, you made a good point at saying that, well, what's next you're gonna be? Nine million? What's next you're gonna be? Eleven million and so forth and so forth. Right now, with this opportunity presented in front of us, we have a chance to stop rising and start saving. We have a chance to actually put mon- keep money in the budget and use it towards our project. Yeah, it's scary, like everything else we've gone through. It's scary, but we've gone through it and we succeeded. E- everybody's worried about this water project, which is very understandable. But the city manager knows how important this water project is. He's not gonna let that go, let it, let it fail. So why, we all know, why is it that we all know that this is gonna save us, but we're afraid to go and reach for the savings?
Hey, Brandon, I don't, I don't know that it's gonna save us. And I know that I would like to see all kinds of things in the plan. I'd like the time to budget it properly and make sure that every single thing is in there. So the city council can be confident in whatever it is, whatever department that they create. And to be quite honest, I wouldn't risk anything right now on that water deal. And if that means that we shut down all essential projects and we do nothing but the water deal, that's great. That's great. And and by doing that, you would save a bunch of money. W- w- and Mr. Lynn's right, we do need to finish some projects. We've got two priorities. We got the water deal and we got water main replacement. Those two things have to go, they have to continue. So for anybody to say, you know, why we don't believe it, I mean, I haven't seen it. I I would have to see it. I I mean, I can tell you all kinds of stories, and they could be true stories. But until I know, I know that Hanson's been here long before I got here. I mean, how long have they been working with you?
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay, so they've been here a few years, they've worked with you, they've worked with me, they've worked with everybody else. You know what they cost. You know what they're capable of, you know what they can do. I'm confident that they will get that water deal done. And I just, it doesn't matter if you tell me it's garbage. I haven't worked with them. I don't know what their plans are on this water deal. All I know is Hanson's been cleaning up this mess since two thousand seventeen. And we're gonna take all that knowledge and slowly get rid of it and hope that whoever we bring on picks up that information. That's years of information. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, in a, in a sense, yes. But at the same time, we're not just throwing Hanson out to the curb. They're still gonna be here. They sell projects.
Are you here?
Paid them. We we've already paid for services. They have to live up to services that they've been paid for. They can't just say, oh, well, you got a new con- a new guy in here, we're gonna take off. That, it doesn't work like that. They have to fulfill their contract. So we go out and get an engineer, if we go out and get an engineer within the city, that not only starts saving us money, that prevents having to risk next year or years after that, Hanson coming back to their table saying, well, we got this, and I need to raise you up X amount of money for whatever reason it's gonna be there, like we did this past January. Do you wanna continue paying more and more and more? Or do you wanna try saving some money and saving some taxpayer money at the, at the same time? And have our own in-house guy who knows what he's doing. We're not just gonna hire some modell off the street. He's gonna have to have his credentials, he's gonna have to have experience in all this.
Man, finish it?
Go ahead.
Um, I'm okay with what um, what all of you are saying, but what uh Justin has said about putting together, uh 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 actually drawing it out on paper and having it for the next meeting. I'm okay with that also. That way we can see it and see the progress and see the steps and all understand what we're looking at. So we can make a very, very informed decision, which is what it sound like everybody wants. Nobody's against this. Everybody sounds like it's something that we think is good for the city. But each one of us have a different level of how we want to see it. So I think go, if we're gonna move forward, I think the best thing to do is what um Justin has said. And get the, get it lined out, line item by line item, what we, how we're gonna do and what we're gonna do. And, you know, what what um city manager Lynn presented sounds great, but I'm, he has it on paper, but I don't see it and nobody else sees it. So uh if he could just transform that to paper and bring it back to us at the next meeting, so we could really and truly look at it and and make a informed decision.
Counsel, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, here's what I can do and here's what I cannot do, okay? I cannot do anything as a budget, because you didn't approve to create the department. What I can do, however, is I can prepare a a a brief synopsis, and that is what I will do. I will prepare a synopsis. It will not be line items, it will not be codes, it will not be, and it'll just be numbers. Okay, I I cannot get into anything that remotely looks like a budget, because you didn't approve this department. And then it, because if I do that, it looks, it looks like I'm adding to the budget.
City manager, I I understand, and and eventually we will get to. I, I understand, and, and eventually we will get to where we're using the terms where we all understand. But basically you're doing a quote instead of an invoice. And we'd like to see it put together so that if you call it a synopsis, that's fine with us. But you're putting the information on paper, we don't need, like you say, we don't need a, a line item for it, we don't need a budget number for it or anything like that. We just need a presentation, just like one of the folks that was doing a bid for us would put together a presentation and say, this is what's gonna be for this, this is gonna be for this, and here's what you're looking at, your costs would be, and here's how we're gonna make that work.
And that I can do for you.
Synopsis is?
Yes, sir, and that I will do for you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, cause I, I, that would be very much appreciated.
No, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page as to what I was gonna put together for you, that's all.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
So what's the motion one more time?
The motion would be to, um, a, a, um, give staff direction to put together a proposal or synopsis of what the department would entail as far as staffing, equipment, office expenses. So, um, like if they need two vehicles, two engineers, um, or whatever the case might be, what, whatever, um, the, the, the entry level into this engineering department, the city manager fills necessary, um, to create.
Second?
I second that.
Yeah, I thought it already been second.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Council Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
Counsel Sine?
Yes.
Counsel Kano?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number eighteen, consideration and possible action in regard to an agreement with Great American Financial Services for Toshiba E Studio thirty fifteen A C system from Dewitt Post and Sons. Is there a presentation?
Um, secretary will have that one.
Okay.
So what this is, is the printer scanner copier that is at the water department. Um, it would, when the guys would scan papers, it was not clear, they had a hard time with getting good quality copies. So we went to Greater Amer- um, to Dewitt Post who we had the printer with, and we asked them if they could quote us on a, on a better version of the printer, which they did. And I included the agreement in your packet. So this would actually be to own the printer and it'd be sixty-three payments of two thirty-six.
Motion? Any movement?
Make the motion to consider item eighteen on the agenda?
Second?
Second it.
Discussion?
This is something they need to have, correct?
Yes, sir.
Amanda, do you want to have a service agreement with them? So whenever it needs services or you talk that?
We currently do have a services agreement with them on the printer that we had. And I, I believe that one was a rental agreement, but this one is to actually purchase the printer.
Okay, so, but you guys wouldn't have an, any kind of agreement if it needed services, so you, because even first.
I believe, um, since already included in the agreement. And with, with the agreement that we have here at City Hall, it, during the, the time that we are paying, we also, um, are able to receive free toner and supplies for the printer as well.
Okay, good, that's, I just wanna make sure you guys have what you needed, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to take action, uh, in regards to an agreement with Great American Financial Services for Toshiba E Studio thirty fifteen A C system from Dewitt, Dewitt Post and Sons.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
Counsel Sine?
Yes.
Counsel Kano?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, motion passes, thank you. Item number nineteen, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash fifteen. A resolution of the City of Kennedy, Texas, finding that AEP Texas Incorporated's application to amend the distribution cost recovery factors to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Presentation?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, time that an entity wishes to, uh, raise their rate that pays us, uh, fees, they have to let us know. Um, historically, um, City of Kennedy has worked with a Mr. Thomas Burcato. Um, and, um, I, I, I'm not fami- I was never familiar with this individual, so, um, I brought in, I brought in Attorney Ruiz on this. Um, and one of the things Mr. Burcato did advise is that we proceeded with the denial of the increased rates. Uh, Mr. Burcato provided all the resolution and that that you have in front of you. Um, so I would say, uh, typically municipalities, like I know with Atmos Synergy, um, they, they typically deny the increase in rates, uh, because that means an increase in rates to their residents.
Yeah.
I would, I would recommend that we proceed and deny the increase in rates. But if you have any specific questions about the legality, about every, uh, Attorney Ruiz has been in contact with Attorney Burcato. So I would prefer.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we consider agenda item number nineteen.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
If I remember correctly, about two years ago, we had to do this and we had a presentation down at City Hall and the, um, lady that was sent it, presented it, um, recommended that we deny it, so, um.
I remember that.
Yeah. So, um, Mr. Reeves, do we need, I mean, is there anything more that we should add to it, or should we just make a motion to deny it?
Also?
Adolfo left the call.
Oh, maybe.
Okay.
I guess he's on a break.
Well, uh, because it, historically, we've denied this since I've been on council and I think according to what, uh, Mr. Lynn said, that we, the council in general has denied it. I'll make a motion, um, in regard to Resolution twenty dash fifteen, that we, uh, deny the increase of distribution rates.
Second?
And I'll second that. I'll second that.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
Counsel Sine?
Yes.
Counsel Kano?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number twenty, consideration and possible action in regard to Resolution twenty dash sixteen. A resolution of the City of Kennedy approving the submission of a grant application for the citizen self-reporting and case management software in addition to funds for COVID nineteen supplies. Presentation, please?
Yes, sir, Chief, uh, Ash will do the presentation on that.
Okay, go ahead, Chief Ash.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you. Uh, this is basically, uh, two, two grants that we're requesting from our record management company. Uh, the first one is a, is a self-reporting system. This came about as a COVID nineteen response. Uh, it allows for citizens to be able to report some offenses at home without having to have an officer come to the house. Uh, it allows people to have better access to the police department. Um, and the second one is a, a case management system, um, which is an issue that I've identified that is kinda weakness for us, that we need to better to, uh, track our cases. Uh, both of these are one hundred percent grants, uh, paid for by the state. Um, our record management company is doing all the work on the grant for us. Uh, they will also add money in there, uh, for supplies, COVID nineteen cleaning supplies, uh, that I believe, uh, Amanda has gotten some numbers for that. That will all be paid for a one hundred percent grant with no matching, uh, but they do request a resolution of support from our council for these. Total number for the two, um, software is a little over thirty thousand dollars. And then there'll be some money for, uh, cleaning supplies as well. Thank you, sir.
Nice, nice, thank you. Any movement?
Before we go.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to consider item ni- item twenty on the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Chief Ash, um, because this agenda item is discussing COVID nineteen supplies for the police department, are you currently tracking, uh, the supplies usage, um, that have been incurred during COVID nineteen?
So, uh, the, uh, Amanda is, is putting together that list, I believe, of what we bought for supplies. Um, most of what we bought so far have been cleaning supplies, a lot of the masks, uh, those kinda things have been donated. Um, I know she's been buying some more and this will, this money will help reimburse the cost of that.
Okay, the rea- the only reason I ask is I did call Mr. Lynn earlier. I found out about a grant today about COVID nineteen reimbursement. Um, so if any other expenses that you incur or any of the other departments incur, let's make sure that we're tracking it because I think after talking to Mr. Lynn, um, the City of Kennedy might be applying for a grant. Um, with that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty dash, twenty dash sixteen, um, for the citizen self-reporting in case management software and the additional funds for the COVID nineteen supplies.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? Is there any other discussion?
No.
Sounds like a good thing. If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Counsel Bionis?
Yes.
Counsel Win?
Yes.
Counsel Sine?
Yes.
Counsel Kano?
Yes.
Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number twenty-one, consideration.
I'm sorry, will you allow me a minute? Adolfo just told me that he's on the call, but that I have to, I need to practice and figure out which one he is real quick.
Take your time, let me know when you're ready.
Okay, hold on. Adolfo, are you there? Adolfo?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you now, I know where you're at, okay.
Can you hear me now? Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Item number twenty-one, consideration and possible action into or- regarding to ordinance twenty dash zero seven and ordinance amending ordinance number S ninety-five, designating and approving location of stop and yield signs within the city limits of Kennedy, Texas, repealing all ordinances in conflict, in conflict herewith and containing a savings clause. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, this came about because, uh, a resident reached out to the mayor several times within a very short period of time uh, regarding vehicular traffic extending from Rungy Street to Fifth Street down Daley Street. Um, after about the third message from the mayor, I, I went out to the, uh, location and I, I sat and observed unimpeded traffic from Rungy to Fifth Street. Noticed there were, um, houses along that faced Daley Street. Uh, it looked like there was, uh, items in yards that would indicate children present along Daley Street. Uh, and based upon the urgency, the potential safety hazard to the children with these vehicles, uh, traveling down Daley Street at the rate of speed they were traveling, um, it became necessary that the solution was to put up stop signs. We put up stop signs at every intersection between, uh, Rungy and Daley. Um, the mayor was fully kept abreast of all of this. Uh, it was actually the mayor, uh, that asked me to make sure I put the, uh, ordinance on this agenda, uh, to which I told him I would, I would take care of doing that. The city had an ordinance for that, so that's what brings about the ordinance tonight for the stop signs, uh, on, uh, Daley Street.
Thank you. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item twenty-one on the agenda?
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Sounds like this is something we need.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Hey, I don't wanna beat you up on this and it, I just feel like, uh, every time I talk, you, you think that I'm trying to attack you. I just wanna get a better understanding on this. Uh, I've heard everything that you said and I appreciate what you've done over there. Um, do you think that we could work with the police department for future problems like this? Conduct a study, collect a little bit of data, and then maybe create some kinda plan of action?
Uh, you know, Mayor, um, with, with, you know, with, the reason why I did what I did was because of the frequency and the time between you reaching out to me. It, it, it conveyed to me that there was a really sense of emergency that we didn't have time to create a long study. Um, that's why I did it the way I did it. I was trying to act in the best interest of the safety of everybody, uh, with it being such a great concern. I do agree that when we have an issue like this on another street, if there's not as great a concern and it doesn't present as, um, as, a- as, as much of an emergency for the safety of the people, we should, we should do studies, and I agree with that. And Chief Ash and I work real well together and, and, and we can do these things. And most definitely going forward, you know, uh, we look at those things as well. Um, I just want you to understand that it was because I sensed there was a, a, a grave sense of urgency that this need to be addressed right away, why I acted the way I acted in this.
So, yeah, I, I. I appreciate that and please, again, do not misunderstand me, I just wanna make sure that in the future that you're able to do it, and I understand the urgency. But we all know what's gonna happen is they're just gonna move to the other street, so we gotta be prepared.
I have a question. Uh.
Yes.
For the chief and Mr. Lynn, um, are you guys gonna put this in the paper so people know that those stop signs are there, you know, so, or give us some, uh, give the people there some kinda warning other than this, uh, meeting, cause probably a lot of people don't hear it? But is there gonna be some kind of, you know, letting people be aware that those stop signs are going up?
Um, we can do that, counselor, I, I do not have a problem with that. Um, the one particular stop sign needs absolutely no advertising, it blinks all on its own. Um, and it is very bright at nighttime, um, almost blinding. Uh, but yes, counselor, uh, we can, uh, reach out to the newspaper, uh, what's today, Tuesday? Uh, the paper prints what, Thursday, so if we have time tomorrow? Okay, so, um, will we have time tomorrow to get it in this Thursday's paper, does anyone think?
That would be good, just so we can let everybody know and I guess probably on your, on the city page also, just to let people be aware that those new stop signs are going up, just so, yeah, you know, people know what's going on.
Most definitely, yes, ma'am, we'll even put it, we'll put it on the Facebook page as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any movement?
I'll make a motion to take action in regards to ordinance twenty dash zero seven and ordinance amending ordinance number F. and ordinance amending ordinance number F nine five, designating and approving locations of stop signs and yield signs within the city limits of Kennedy, Texas, repealing all ordinance in conflict herewith and containing a savings clause.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor Bieber?
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number twenty-two, consideration and possible action in regard to ordinance twenty dash zero eight and ordinance of the city council of the city of Kennedy amending the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget for the addition of a police officer for the Kennedy Police Department. Is there a presentation?
Yes, sir. This is one of those things we talked about as far back as the interview. And we found an officer that fits everything we're looking for right now. We just needed to move the money from different line items. And Chief Ash and I went over his budget together and we found the line item. So essentially, all you're doing tonight with the ordinance is you are approving the amendment to the budget to move the line, to move the money from other line items within the budget to the salaries line item and the taxes line item and the retirement line item in the police budget to pay for this police officer this year.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to consider agenda item twenty-two.
Second?
Second?
Discussion.
So, where are we moving this money from out of the police department budget? Like, where are we moving it from? And then we know where it's going to, but where's it coming from?
Well, that's all in the findings of fact. Let's see here. We're going to move it from, I gotta read down. We're going to move it from a city council travel fund, a professional services fund, that was the police department professional services fund, certification pay fund. Chief Ash identified the fact that it's over budget at this point in time. The employee bonus fund, which was, I believe you all were doing a Employee of the Month and you were doing a gift card. Well, the money that's left over in that account with the remaining months left, there was more than enough to cover it. A non-professional services fund, the physical exams fund, the minor tools fund, the janitorial fund and the chemical and medical fund. We had to go through quite a few funds to get it. But we found it and was able to move everything from all those funds. But just so you know, there's still money left in all of those funds that should be enough money to handle the rest of the budget year. So, we're not moving it all to zero. We're just moving out what was considered overages at this point in time. That's why I took so many funds.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question for Brandon. Just with that amount of money taken out of the fund for our meetings that we go to, is there enough left? Because I know Brandon was real concerned about that line item before, making sure there was enough money for us to go to meetings and things. Brandon, was there anything that you had planned that you needed more than what's going to be left in there? I just want to double check with you because I know that was important to you.
Oh, let's see, that still leaves, you take the thirty-four seventy, divide that by travel, five, seven, yeah, that, I'll be fine with that. That'll still cover all of us if we decide to go somewhere, unless one of y'all disagrees. Well, they still have the trainings this year, Amanda, towards the fall? The T M L that has all those classes?
I haven't received anything about, like the T M L conference, I have not received anything about that yet. I know the training is.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
How many total officers do we have, not including this one, at the city of Kennedy Police Department?
Or Chief Ash?
Twelve, counting the S R O.
What was it?
He said twelve officers, counting the S R O, not counting the administrative assistant.
Okay, and this will make thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Do we know how many the county has?
I do not. I think it's four officers patrolled. And then there are some investigators. I don't know total, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I believe it's fourteen. Do we really need thirteen officers in the city of Kennedy?
Well, remember, Mayor, we talked about having a certain number of vehicles per shift. We've had officers that have taken leave for personal reasons and that, officers that have been sick. It certainly never hurts as long as the budget can support it. It certainly never hurts. And that's why we're moving slow in adding and, you know, and just adding one. Chief Ash and I sat down and talked about it and we pegged our number to be three is what we actually need to have the police department at a staffing level where we feel comfortable providing the patrolling that we desire to provide to the city of Kennedy. So, but we're still taking it slow.
Chief Ash, if you're on, kind of like what we were talking with Mr. Lynn about the engineering position, with this added officer, can you let us know what the restructure of the police department would be?
Sure. I went over this with the manager, gave him my plan of what I want to do with it. I believe this one, this particular, the new position will be a traffic position. Their function will mainly be patrolling, looking for trucks and traffic violations. There'll also be our mental health officer. So, anytime that we have to deal with a mental health issue, transporting or anything like that, we'll have this person do that. That will free those duties up from our patrol so they won't have to do that. This also allows us to add, we'll have at least four cars a day, five days a week, probably closer to five on a daily basis. So, you'll see more vehicles, we'll have a traffic function and we'll also handle our mental health function as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ash. The things that we had said that we wanted you to accomplish, does that meet with what we had asked you to get done?
I am, yes, sir, that's what I'm trying to get to. Some of the priorities that you established for me when I first started, I know trucks was definitely one of them, narcotics, which I've been working on. The mental health is something that come up here recently that you're all concerned about. So, I tried to find a way with the limited, you know, limiting it to one person, but I think we can accomplish a lot of those goals with this one officer. I think it'll work really well.
Now, one question I have. Go ahead, Brenda.
Go ahead. No, you go first. Go ahead.
The one question I did have, and I don't know if this is what the mayor was maybe potentially asking, but if you get this one added position, are we looking for additional added positions going into fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget? Or are you thinking this will suffice your needs further?
Right, so I think for the goals that we have, I think adding this one officer will accomplish those goals. If in the future, the council decides they want me to provide other goals or other things, then we can certainly look at that. But I also understand that it's a budgetary thing and that, you know, next couple of years may not be good for that. But I did, I did speak with the manager, I gave him kind of a plan over the next few years, what I'm thinking about and what I would do with the different officers. But I think for today, if we did this one officer, it lets me check off three or four boxes of goals that we want to accomplish.
Thank you. Brenda, I'm sorry for cutting you off. Go ahead.
You're finding it hard over the phone. And you're okay with, and Chief Ash, and you're okay with all the money that y'all moved? And you felt confident with that, with what y'all did with the budget right now?
Yes, ma'am. Same manager and I went over with it and we looked at what we thought we were going to spend. And I think, yeah, I'm very, I'm very confident with it. I think he's got it right.
Okay.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Hey, what is your total budget, your annual budget?
One second, I can find out for you.
It doesn't have to be exact.
It's in the neighborhood of, it's in the neighborhood of seven hundred and change, seven hundred and eighty, seven hundred and ninety, something like that.
Okay. Hey, the people in my neighborhood are really upset. I'm sure you're aware of that. I know you can't commit an officer here and there and everywhere and we got a lot of stuff to do. But this is one item that I've actually been contacted about and they're like, hey, guys, what are we going to do? Keep hiring them or are we going to go to work? Is there any explanation for that? What should my answer be when people ask me that?
I'm not sure what, what is, are they complaining about traffic or is it a?
Traffic, gunshots. I mean, it's like a racetrack over here and.
Yes, that's why it just, when we add this other person, I'm going to make him a traffic person. And he's going to work Main Street, Fifth Street, one eighty-one, and that's going to be his focus. I get, I get more complaints on traffic than almost anything else, so I really want to focus on that. I've got one of my officers who's a really good go-getter on traffic and I'm going to put him doing that. So that should, it will also give you a lot more visibility on that street as well. So, I'm hoping that will help a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lynn, this is a question for you and this is something, because I know what James is talking about and aware of and with Fifth Street and Main Street being highways, I don't know if we can coincide this with the agenda item, but because we have such high eighteen-wheeler traffic with oil and gas and everything else going through those two major streets, is it possible that we can possibly put up some type of, I don't even know what it'd be called. And I know the city of Yocum did something like this where you see it at a lot of like ranch entrances where it's something that bridges across the street that doesn't allow eighteen-wheelers to enter like egress or ingress or egress into those areas. Is that something we could possibly do if we partnered with Tech dot? And then for the eighteen-wheeler traffic for the residents, let's say if somebody bought a new sofa, they would have alternate routes that they would have to travel through? Is that something that's a possibility?
Well, counselor, it's something we would have to look at. I know that Chief Ash and I have talked about something that has probably a little bit more of a punch and a benefit. And I think what we would look at doing is trying to explore finding a scale. We've already got a sign up on Main Street. It both ends in main with a weight limit on it. Currently, the way the city ordinance is written, it's nothing more than a slap on the wrist for a semi truck coming down Main Street that exceeds the limits. If we can get us a scale that we can certify, we can start writing them weight limit tickets. And those weight limit tickets go to their, that puts points on their C D Ls. And as there's, points start racking up, they start paying attention more to the truck routes. That is certainly something that I would probably rather explore along Fifth Street as well because those weight limit tickets bring revenue to the municipality to, you know, to some degree, whatever it may be. So, it's something that when I look at things, I have to look at what is going to get the most bang for the buck, so to speak, and I hate to use that word. But I have to look at what's going to make the most impact on these truckers. And I have found in other municipalities that what makes the most impact is points on the license. Nothing motivates truckers or companies for that matter like their truckers getting points on their license. So, I would, I would not rule out what you're asking. I would need to talk with the people at Tech dot. I would also need to partner with the county and that where they have these or the other city you mentioned that has these. And, you know, we'd have to find out how it's working and all of those things as well. I would definitely have to put some research into it to go that road.
Okay, and I, I know it's something, I'm not saying my solution is the best solution. It's just one that I am aware of. But maybe the weight scale might be a better solution. But I know, I know the council is aware of how heavy the traffic is on Main Street and Fifth Street, especially with commercial-sized trucks like eighteen-wheelers. And if this is something that can be at least thought about or looked into, I know I would appreciate it, the mayor would appreciate it, the citizens in this district would appreciate it. And so, if that's something you're able to look into, it would be appreciated.
I will, I will explore all options to make our streets safer for our residents that anybody has and they want to bring to me, counselor. So definitely I will look into this to see what kind of viability it has. Chief Ash and I will partner on this and we'll see where we can go with it.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody have any movement?
I'll make a motion that we take action in regards to ordinance twenty-eight and ordinance for the city council of the city of Kennedy amending twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget for an additional, for an additional, for an addition of a police officer for the Kennedy Police Department.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Counselor.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number twenty-three, consideration and consider impossible action, appointing William Lynn to replace Chris Bratton on the T I R Z board. Presentation?
The city secretary will present.
The city manager is a member of the tourist board. Mr. Bratton was interim city manager, so that's where he was placed on the tourist board. And now that we have a permanent city manager, we are asking to place the permanent city manager on the board.
Okay, thank you. Any movement?
Make a motion to discuss item twenty-three.
I'll second.
Discussion. Is there any discussion?
This is just a swap, correct, from the way, just like we said, replacing Bratton to Lynn.
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to go ahead and appoint our city manager, William Lynn, to replace Chris Bratton on the tourist board.
Second?
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I'm just curious, when does the board?
They meet quarterly, where they were meeting quarterly and then you decided to meet semi-annually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they, they should meet once in July.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call the roll, Amanda.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn? Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Conno?
Yes.
Counselor Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Item number twenty-four, consideration and possible action in regard to closing the water and sewer I M M account at Texas Champion Bank. Presentation, please.
Um, City, uh, Secretary knows about that one.
Okay.
The water and sewer I M M account was our money market account at Texas Champion Bank for the surplus fund for our water and sewer account. And, um, I don't know if y'all remember, a couple of months ago, um, y'all authorized us to open a water and sewer account with Techpool. So those funds have been transferred to Techpool. And so this account is no longer needed.
Okay, any movement? Thank you.
Welcome.
Make a motion to consider item twenty-two.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Account we don't need, I don't see any reason to keep it open.
Okay, anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, that, uh, we take action in regard to closing the water and sewer I M M account at Texas Champion Bank.
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. Item number twenty-five, closed session. City council will meet in closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code under section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, ending or completed litigation in matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinar- disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly requires discussion in closed session. Any movement?
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Amanda, are you gonna send us a different, uh, conference call link?
Yes, I will send it, I will send a different, um, phone number and access code to all your, um, to text you all. Um, Council Sines, I will not include you in the first round once they discuss the items that pertain to anything with you then. After that, then I will send you the, the information so you can get on the call. And then I will put it on book once we are back on, um, we are going back in open session. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
So we're still in, um, we have, we have a draft deadline for executives, or we're just voting out for closed session, is that correct?
Yes, voting for closed session.
Okay, alright, okay, sure. Go ahead, sorry.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you. At this time, we'll go into closed session.
We just all hang up, wait for the numbers that correct?
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash. This conference will now be recorded.
Rendered.
Are you gonna review that prior to?
Yes, um, I, I, I will recommend that the council will see this before it comes back to council.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second that. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Amanda, please call the roll.
Council Brianis?
Yes.
Council Lynn?
Yes.
Council Sines?
Yes.
Council Conno?
Yes.
Council Meyer?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, thank you, guys. Item twenty-seven, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Eating as a adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, counsel. Have a good evening.
Alright, thank you.